Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to see you all here tonight. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the City of Titusville City Council to order. If you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Can you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where she stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign up card and sign the oath. Sign up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is to offer twice in the meeting and individuals who speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions or requests must address pending issues and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager? You've got minutes? Everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes? Member Nelson?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second? I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
V B Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel, we're on Agenda Item six A, which is the Student Advisory Council. For the code removal of members, a memo from the chairperson is included in your packet that notice notify City Council that the tenth grade representative from Titusville High School automatically forfeited her seat due to having missed three consecutive regular meetings on November nineteenth, December seventeenth and January twenty first. The student would like to continue to serve on the board and request council's consideration to grant a leave of absence, excusing her absences.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, is there any cards?
No, sir. I believe the student may be here.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Grace Baraza and I'm here to appeal my removal from the student city council. I understand the importance of attendance, but I'd like to explain the circumstances behind my three absences. As a minor, I rely on my mom for transportation. Unfortunately, she was recently involved in a car accident which has left her with knee injuries and anxiety about driving. I didn't have my driver's license yet, which made it impossible for me to attend some meetings. Despite these challenges, I'm a dedicated student who's passionate about serving my community. I'm involved in numerous extracurricular activities such as best buddies, anchor club, National Honor Society, student government, robotics and model student senate. And I know my experiences would be an asset to the student city council and I'm eager to propose ideas. I will make sure I will attend meetings regularly if you give me another chance. I promise to work hard to make up for lost time and I ensure my attend and I will make sure that I will attend all the meetings going forward. I respectfully request that you reconsider my removal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Stokoe?
Yes, I just want to say, I've this, I'm going on my ninth year of serving now and for anybody that's been absent from any of our boards, I don't think we've ever had somebody come and explain why and to fight for their role and want to serve and take ownership over that. And I just want to commend you and say thank you. I really appreciate that and I will be wanting you to stay on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Any other cards? All right, thank you. Any discussion? I don't see any discussion. Can I have a motion, please? Member Muscoso?
Oh, yeah. I move that the city council consider the reinstatement of Grace Baraza to the student advisory council.
Second? I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
V B Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel, we're on Agenda Item six A, which is the Student Advisory Council. For the code removal of members, a memo from the chairperson is included in your packet that notice notify City Council that the tenth grade representative from Titusville High School automatically forfeited her seat due to having missed three consecutive regular meetings on November nineteenth, December seventeenth and January twenty first. The student would like to continue to serve on the board and request council's consideration to grant a leave of absence, excusing her absences.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, is there any cards?
No, sir. I believe the student may be here.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Grace Baraza and I'm here to appeal my removal from the student city council. I understand the importance of attendance, but I'd like to explain the circumstances behind my three absences. As a minor, I rely on my mom for transportation. Unfortunately, she was recently involved in a car accident which has left her with knee injuries and anxiety about driving. I didn't have my driver's license yet, which made it impossible for me to attend some meetings. Despite these challenges, I'm a dedicated student who's passionate about serving my community. I'm involved in numerous extracurricular activities such as best buddies, anchor club, National Honor Society, student government, robotics and model student senate. And I know my experiences would be an asset to the student city council and I'm eager to propose ideas. I will make sure I will attend meetings regularly if you give me another chance. I promise to work hard to make up for lost time and I ensure my attend and I will make sure that I will attend all the meetings going forward. I respectfully request that you reconsider my removal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Stokoe?
Yes, I just want to say, I've this, I'm going on my ninth year of serving now and for anybody that's been absent from any of our boards, I don't think we've ever had somebody come and explain why and to fight for their role and want to serve and take ownership over that. And I just want to commend you and say thank you. I really appreciate that and I will be wanting you to stay on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Any other cards? All right, thank you. Any discussion? I don't see any discussion. Can I have a motion, please? Member Muscoso?
Oh, yeah. I move that the city council consider the reinstatement of Grace Baraza to the student advisory council.
Second? I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Grace. Thank you. Welcome back. City Manager?
Onto six B, which is the North Brevard County Hospital District Board. The North Brevard County Hospital District Board Semiannual Report will be presented by the Chairman, Mr. Robert Jordan.
Ready?
Ready, Mr. Jordan.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Connors and members of the city council. I'm Robert Jordan, Chairman of Parish Medical Center Board of Directors. It is my honor to present Parish Medical Center's first semi annual report for two thousand and twenty five. Before I begin, I would like to make a moment, take a moment to welcome and congratulate the two newest members of the council. Mayor Andrew Connors and of course, Councilmember Megan McCoswell. I hope I say that right. I'm also, I want to take a moment to recognize and congratulate Mayor Connors on recently earning the prestigious honor of being named as Lead Brevard Four Under Forty Award recipient. A great accomplishment. Congratulations to you, sir. Don't turn red on me, okay? It's okay. Parish had the honor of serving as one of the primary sponsors for the award ceremony. It was heartwarming to see how well the city of Titusville and North Brevard was represented that evening. Vice Mayor Cole and Councilmember Sarah Stokoe, who herself was a Lead Brevard Four Under Forty recipient in two thousand and twenty three, were in attendance as well as a whole contingent from Parish Healthcare to celebrate the winners and each of the twelve finalists. We are truly fortunate to have young leaders of such high caliber. Young leaders.
Are you looking at me?
No. Definitely want to look at you. At our community to ensure Florida's space coast continue to thrive. Parish Medical Center, as part of our enabling legislation, serves as a special district of the state of Florida. Twice a year, we come before the Titusville City Council to provide you and the citizens a report of how we are serving to fulfill our mission. A written report was provided to you in advance. My presentation this evening will highlight select announcements and accomplishments from the report, beginning with an important announcement about taxes. Remaining undonnet and relenting in our focus on fulfilling our mission, North Brevard Parish Medical Center continues to serve as a resilient and formidable force among independent, public, not-for-profit community health systems in the state of Florida and beyond, all without taxing the community for more than thirty years. While Parish Medical Center as an independent special taxing district of the state of Florida has authority to tax, the Volunteer Board of Directors of Parish Medical Center has for the thirtieth straight year voted not to tax the community we serve. Since my time on the board, I've been more than impressed with our board's commitment and leadership to not tax our citizens. In stark contrast, in communities all over the state, other Florida independent special district hospitals has levied billions of dollars in ad valorem taxes collectively over the past seven years. Whereas Parish Medical Center, in its decision to not levy taxes on the community, has foregone tens of millions of dollars in potential tax revenue over the last thirty years, something of which we can all be proud of and can appreciate. If you're not proud of it, I'm proud of it. Thirty years of no taxes says a lot about an organization for sure. Every report since I can remember, we have been proud to share new accomplishments and recognitions earned by more than twelve hundred Parish Healthcare care partners, demonstrating the relentless pursuit of excellence in the care and services provided. And since our September report to you, Parish has earned the following recognition. Parish Healthcare was named Large Business of the Year by the Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce at their two thousand and twenty five Board of Directors Installation Dinner. This prestigious award, presented by Chapter President Aaron Aikens, highlights Parish Healthcare's outstanding achievements and a commitment to innovation, sustainability, social responsibility and consistent commitment to Brevard community. Through various initiative, whether local job creation, charitable contribution or sustainable practices, Parish Healthcare shows us that true success is measured not just by profit margins, but by the positive impact they have on the world around us, stated Aikens. In addition, Parish Healthcare's Foundation Director, Matthew Mark, was honored by his civic service as the Chamber's Immediate Past Chair and Communications Director Samantha Decker was newly installed as a member of the Chamber Board. Parish Medical Center was named among the nation's top fourteen percent of all hospitals for maternity care access by U S News and World Report, the global authority in hospital rankings and consumer advice. U S News and World Report introduced this recognition last year to bring attention to essential hospitals serving communities that would be in danger of becoming maternity care deserts if they were to stop providing crucial maternity care services. According to U S News Health Data Scientist Jennifer Winston, being named a maternity care access hospital is special recognition of hospitals across the U S, which serve communities that depend on them for access to vital maternity care services. While an increasing number of maternity care deserts and parts of the country have left millions of people without local access to maternity care, these hospitals persist in providing this vital service to under-resourced communities. U S News and World Report also named Parish Medical Center as a two thousand and twenty five high performing hospital for overall maternity care. This is the highest award a hospital can earn as part of U S News Best Hospitals for Maternity Care Annual Study. U S News began evaluating maternity care hospitals in two thousand and twenty one, rating hospitals provide labor and delivery services and submit detailed data to the publications for analysis. According to U S News for the two thousand and twenty five edition, eight hundred and seventeen hospitals, an all time high, submitted maternity data for evaluation. And according to the publication's Health Data Scientist, Dr. Jennifer Winston, she said, "With a record breaking number of hospitals evaluated, U S News' two thousand and twenty five best hospitals for maternity care ratings represent the most comprehensive resource yet for expecting parents. These high performing hospitals showcase exceptional care for expecting parents, demonstrating significantly lower C-section rates and severe unexpected newborn complications compared to hospitals not recognized by U S News." Also recognizing Parish Healthcare's excellence in maternity care was Florida Blue, the state's Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan. Parish earned the Blue Distinction Center for Maternity Care Designation as part of the Blue Distinctions Specialty Care Program. To earn this designation, each facility must deliver quality care, safety and cost effectiveness. The Blue Distinction Centers for Maternity Care Program plays a key role in the Blue Cross Blue Shield Association's National Health Equity Strategy aimed at reducing racial health disparities across the care spectrum and improving patient outcomes for all Americans. No doubt, our community has access to top notch maternity care thanks to the skills and dedication of our Parish maternity care professionals and thanks to the steadfast leadership of Parish's President and CEO, Dr. George McCarterian, who was also recently honored with a recognition from bestselling author and healthcare leader, Ari Chapman and the Ari Chapman Foundation. Mr. Chapman recently visited Parish Medical Center for a two day engagement as part of the Health System Leadership Development Initiative. During Mr. Chapman's visit, on behalf of Ari Chapman Foundation based in Nashville, Tennessee, he presented Parish Healthcare President and CEO George McCarterian with the Healing Hospital CEO of the Year Award. The award is in recognition of his exceptional leadership and longstanding dedication to the principles of radical loving care to establish a workplace culture that supports a continuous chain of comparison and quality inside America's healthcare environments. We also want to extend our congratulation and recognition to the following healthcare providers and husband and wife duo. Pathologist Dr. Shadri achieved her specialty board certification in cytopathology. And Dr. Raul Shadri achieved board certification from the American Board of Gastroenterology. We're also proud to announce that Borough College of Osteopathic Medicine and Parish Healthcare formed a strategic partnership to train future physicians. Borough's third and fourth year medical students will gain essential hands-on experience in various medical specialties under the supervision of Parish Healthcare physicians. From earning healthcare distinction to expanding access to care, Parish continues to welcome new providers to the community. I won't name them all, but direct your attention to the screen to see several of our newest providers ranging from specialties from OBGYN to radiology to oncology. Our report would not be complete without touting the many ways your Parish care partners are extending the reach of our mission and vision into the community through our significant outreach efforts. Parish Healthcare collaborated with the Brevard Homeless Coalition, North Brevard Charities, Life Point Ministries and Under the Bridge Ministries to help coordinate and participate in the annual point in time count. This is part of a national annual initiative held during the last full week in January to gain a snapshot of homelessness and service gaps in communities across America. In North Brevard, dozens of volunteers from the five organizations and several other supporting local organizations dedicated their time and talents to this endeavor to get an accurate count as possible. Further reaching out to support our community's most vulnerable citizens, Parish Healthcare donated hundreds of pounds of hams and turkeys during the holidays, enough to feed more than six hundred families, and donated hundreds of toys to support the Toys for Tots program. Parish Healthcare was again proud to serve as presenting sponsor for the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration at Isaac Henry Park in Titusville and proud to be long-term supporters of the Marine Resource Council and sponsor of their recent Love Our Lagoon Celebration Garden Party and fundraiser. And last, but certainly not least, we extend our sincere gratitude to the Titusville Fire Department. For the tenth year in a row, the Titusville Fire Department's Pink Out Campaign has raised funds in support of our oncology program. This year, the Titusville Fire Department presented the foundation with sixteen hundred dollars, bringing their total donation since the inception of the campaign to more than twenty thousand dollars. The support of our city partners makes us all different. I'm sorry. The support of our city partners makes all the difference as we thank you very much. This concludes my report. Thank you again for the opportunity and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Member Nelson?
Over the years, I have to say Parish has been a rock in our community. And, you know, you think about it and I appreciate everything you guys have done. But I'll tell Natalie and George this. On more personal note, my daughter broke her arm this weekend and cracked it, snapped it in two. And so I spent the weekend at Parish Hospital. The doctor, the anesthesiologist, the nurses, everybody was fantastic. The only thing that I probably should have asked, that's, I was a little stressed out. They probably needed to take care of me too. But they took, they took excellent care of her. She says she is now invalid because she's in a sling. So, but thank you guys because it really brings home that not only are you great for the community, but you're great for us individually. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole?
I'd like to say that I am both proud and privileged to have been a member of the Parish Medical Center Board for twenty five years. The only person that's been on the board longer than me is the person standing at the podium.
And, you know, when you know the intricate workings of the things that our community hospital Parish Medical Center does, you know, it just makes you so proud. And the list of physicians that Mr. Jordan put up, when you look at the credentials of these physicians that are coming to our city, it's just overwhelming with the credentials that they have. So, we are very lucky to have this gem in our city. And I want to thank the Dr. McCarterian for his progressive attitude and moving forward and doing things to make our hospital one of the finest healing environments around. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
All right. I like to leave with this, and I'm going off script here. I know Natalie's gonna get a little nervous when I do this. But you're hearing about, you know, hospital closing in Rockledge and it came to mind when I, when I heard about this, we take things for granted. Parish Medical Center is certainly a jewel in Titusville. And, you know, I see some things on social media sometimes and they're very negative about Parish and the things that are listed in this report shows you that we are always trying to do better. We're always trying to make sure that our citizens get the best healthcare possible. So I would ask all the citizens, I'll ask everyone, when you see some things on social media that are negative, respond in a positive way because it could be very easy that one day we wouldn't have a hospital here and then where would we be? When you see social media and people concerned about where are they gonna go to the hospital, where are they gonna do this? Old saying is, you don't miss your water until the well runs dry. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Item six C, which is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Appointment Reconsideration. At the regular city council meeting on February eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, city council appointed members to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board from the applicants on file. Council made three separate motions making appointments to fill two statute mandated categories within the AHAC. The result, staff is requesting a motion to reconsider both appointments that were made for the one citizens residing within the jurisdiction category. If passed, another motion will be requested appointing one member to fill the vacant position. There are currently two applicants on file for your consideration, Karen McGuire and Elizabeth Ross. Thank you, City Manager. City Council, can I have a motion for reconsideration? Member Nelson?
I would make a motion to reconsider our appointments that we made the last meeting to fill the two statute mandated categories on the AHAC. I don't know if we have any cards.
I have a motion and I have a second. City Clerk, do we have any cards on this?
We have cards on the appointment and I think we have the applicants here as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. See, any further discussion on the reconsideration motion? All right. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to the cards for the appointment.
Do you want to hear from the applicants or the other cards first?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Karen McGuire and I applied for the Citizen at Large position on the Advisory Council. And I can tell you briefly about myself. I just moved here in August. I moved from Winter Park. Very glad to be a resident of the city now. My past career, I'm recently retired two years ago and I worked for Orange County. I was a planner at Orange County for fourteen years. I was also the workforce housing coordinator and I was also a transportation planner for them. So, I've had various jobs in Orange County and I have a real estate license with the state of Florida. It's currently voluntarily inactive. But I am very familiar with all the funding streams and the programs that are available for affordable housing. I know that as, the reason I picked Titusville to live in was because I thought it was a charming town, but I felt like it was going to start to develop. And I know that you'll probably be under development pressure and we know as development pressure persists, the need for affordable housing becomes, you know, more salient. And I feel like I have a lot of experience in that area and I would love to be able to be back in the saddle again. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson has a question for you?
Oh, it's not for Ms. McGuire. It's actually for the City Attorney.
Thank you.
Most of our appointments, you have to live in the city for a year. So...
Correct. See, Manager's about to address that. That's correct.
Okay. And I think Ms. McGuire just said she lived here for two months.
Uh, no, since August.
Since August. Still not a year. Okay. Thank you.
And Ms. Ross? Would you like to come up?
Would you like to come up?
Listen, except for this anything, I just left my math class at the college to shoot over here real quick. Fourth generation, Floridian, Brevard County. My family's been here forever. I have some come in from Tennessee, but I spent 25-plus years in New York. I had my real estate license there. I actually worked for an apartment complex who did affordable housing. It was a low income, so applications up the wazoo. Development's great, but we need to be more concerned about the people who are already here. Instead of, you know, creating more for those to come in, we have enough people here who need the help in more affordable housing. We claim to love Titusville, let's love who's here already, and keep them here, and help them thrive like the rest of us are trying to do. I own a business right here in town, block or two over, and I want to stay. But I'll tell you, a few months ago, I almost lost my business due to unaffordable housing. So, I know firsthand. And I'm not as young as I look, so I've got some... Just because I'm in college, no, but I am back in school at the college locally here. I'm not quite sure yet where it's going to go, but I tend to just keep going back five degrees in the hole. So, maybe I'll break a world record one day. I think I just like to learn. But, so I would love to be here with you guys. I have a ton of ideas, a ton. And I've researched other cities and what's worked for them. Baltimore has a great plan. So I'm hoping maybe, obviously, we don't want to copy nobody, we want to be original. So, but I think with the ideas coming forth and pulling it all together, I think we can come up with something. And housing is so, that's like our foundation. Without that, we can't function elsewhere. It's hard to focus on work and our kids and school and doing other things if we can't have that solid foundation to go home to. So, and that starts with us helping people thrive, become homeowners, forget renting. We want homeowners. So, that's pretty much me in a nutshell, and all I want. So, hopefully, I'll see you guys again, but I am going to get back to class.
Oh. I told her I'd only be gone, I'm just going to pump my head in. So I am going to get back to class. I have to go to class.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Ross. I appreciate it. Yeah.
I'll see you again, hopefully. Thank you, guys.
City Clerk?
The cards were for the next item, so no more cards.
Okay. Thank you. All right. But City Attorney, I would think we all like some clarification on the timeframe. Somebody has to live in the city to apply for one of our boards, because I just double-checked your application, and it does say two months of the time you filled it out.
Right. It said two months, not a year.
And it has to be a year?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Yeah.
Member Nelson?
Next August. Karen, we'd love to have you also, but I don't think you're eligible.
Next year.
Next year. So at this point, I would move to appoint Elizabeth Ross to the AHAQ for the vacant position of a citizen residing within the jurisdiction.
Second?
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
6D is the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. You're to appoint one alternate member to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for an unexpired term to expire on July 31st, 2025. There are two applications on file. Mr. James Troutman, public at large, has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board as an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on July 31st, 2025. Mr. Stuart Buchanan, a person with a minimum of 10 years of experience in land development and a person with a minimum of 10 years in urban planning field, has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board as an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on July 31st, 2025. In addition, staff received an additional application, Mr. Nathan Rotell. In order to consider that application, you have it on the dais, you will have to table this event, or this agenda item, and hear it at your next meeting in order for him to be considered.
Thank you, City Manager. Before we get into the cards, I'll ask council if they would like to consider this third application. Member Nelson?
I would not. We do have some rules about when our applications are supposed to be in, and we granted somebody a pass last meeting, they're supposed to be in, I think it's the Thursday before a meeting. So, I'm sort of like, no, no.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yeah. That's what I was just going to say. My only request is that we be consistent with whatever we do decide to do, because I feel like last time we did vote to say, say yes, and now if we don't vote, I just have a bit of a problem with that, us not being consistent. I don't feel like it's fair to our citizens for them to say, oh, well, it has to be in here for this person, but then it doesn't for this other person. So, that'd be my only request. I do not know this individual, so I am indifferent as to what we allow, but whatever it is, I just, my request is of us, that we decide, what do we want to do moving forward? Do we want to stick to it? Or if we do get a last minute request, are we open to tabling it? That's my request.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Muskoso?
Yeah, I would agree with Member Nelson. I just got this today, and so it wasn't enough time to look into it. So I would ask that we move forward with the two applicants that we have.
All righty. I don't think we need to take a vote on it, because the vote would be, so let's just trudge right along.
I just want to compliment especially Mr. Tolson for heading this. He's doing a very good job of asking a number of questions, and he's been, and always I've been in agreement with what he's had to say. So that's special. And then, looking forward to continuing to be a good program, the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
Tony Shifalo?
Shifalo, Tropic Street, the target area. I don't want to speak negatively about one of the applicants, but I wanted to point out that even with multiple years as a public servant, I think that the service getting, his private business was getting high-density zoning for developers across the state for condos and mixed use. He worked in the city of Holly Hill, and we've seen how that's turned into Holly Hell, and a few years in Daytona before coming to Brevard in 2008. Most recent service, 2015 to 2017, in Palm Bay as Director of Growth Management, and we've seen how growth in Palm Bay has been very distressing to many of the citizens, some of whom have come up to our Titusville area to become involved so that they can warn us of things that have happened there that shouldn't happen here. I say it's not a track record we want for our Titusville managed growth. Every time Mr. Buchanan has spoken in council and at the planning and zoning, has been to raise taxes on citizens to pay for infrastructure. I've been gassed at many of his statements, you know, why would you come here and ask them to raise the taxes, for heaven's sake? Get the developers to pay more for their infrastructure and the impact fees. So I would say, put a citizen who has citizen interests at heart as a homeowner and as an investor in our town. And I would ask you to appoint Mr. Troutman to this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. City Clerk?
Kathleen O'Rourke?
All right. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident, Doctor of Epidemiology. Once again, I have the dubious honor of having to remind the council that while Stuart Buchanan may have some experience relative to the Board of Appeals and Adjustment, he does not demonstrate the ethical and moral attributes which are absolutely essential for members of any city board. I previously spoken about his prior felony conviction, his residence in Leavenworth Prison, questionable activities on a bribery case in Daytona Beach, and the vile and false allegations that he respread regarding the right to clean water and former mayoral candidate Vicki Conklin. I'm not going to belabor those at this point. Rather, I want to focus on the fact that Stuart sent a letter to me specifically bragging about how he subverted the review process of the PNZ board. And that was during the January 28th council meeting. He essentially said that he only applied to the board so that the citizens would take up their time addressing his weaknesses and not have enough time to raise legitimate concerns about the applicants he and other members of his team, whoever they might be, put forth for the PNZ board. He admitted that they were concerned that they didn't have the needed experience. Their plan was to undermine the process of the approval boards, and I find that unconscionable. And Stuart was delighted his scheme worked. It's true, the citizens, myself included, were actually limited in asking the council members to fully examine their applications, because appointing a corrupt candidate was a much greater danger than appointing an unqualified one. That remains today. And speaking of residents, we also know that Stuart spent many years in Leavenworth, but we don't actually know his current residence, as it's blackened out on his application. This is an issue because he could have undisclosed conflicts of interest about cases the board might review, but no one would be able to assess it. And I think it's pretty clear, we count on Stuart to come forward with this information. And so perhaps of even greater importance, Stuart showed incredibly poor judgment by sending a letter to my home address, which I believe could be seen as an intimidation tactic, basically reminding me he knows where I live. And lastly, as I said before, who are the other members of his team? Perhaps since Stuart's here today, somebody might want to ask him that question, because he did speak for others. So I thank you very much. I very much support Mr. Troutman for this position, and I hope that this works out well for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
We have no more cards, but I believe the applicants are here.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Troutman?
How y'all doing this evening? My name is James Troutman. I live at 1705 Barna Avenue. I work for Blue Origin. I do inspections at Blue Origin. I do have some background in dealing with government codes, very high stringent government codes, pretty much to get a rocket off the ground. So, I feel like I have some experiences in this background that I can rely on to help me in this position if I was approved for this. My whole background is process improving. That's what I do at work. I constantly try and find the best way to go forward, and that's what I would bring to this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Troutman. Any questions from council?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. Buchanan?
Hi, Mayor and City Council. My name is Stuart Buchanan. I am a resident of the city of Titusville, which of course, the staff has already verified. I was born and raised here. I've lived here for decades. I served for many, many years as city planner, where I would take in, do the intake on BOA applications. I would write the staff report, make the recommendation, and then present the item before, they call it BAA here, everybody else calls it BOA, Board of Adjustments. The only other thing I'd like to make clear is, my letter was not meant to intimidate Professor O'Rourke at all. I actually hoped that she would come to the city council meeting and read it into the record, and she did. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. All right. With that being said, any further discussion? All right. Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah. I move to approve James Troutman as an alternate member to the Board of Adjustments and Appeal.
Second?
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Troutman. City Manager?
Item 6E, the Titusville Environmental Commission. The Titusville Environmental Commission Semiannual Report will be presented by the Chair, Mr.
Good evening. We were busy last year. We got a couple of big things underway. I'm sure you've read the reports already. The biggest thing was that we've come up with a plan to try to create a different policy that will allow us to grow an urban forest. We're not sure how to make it happen, we're not sure how to fund it, but we have some ideas, some of which are in line with our need for stormwater management. You know, the more trees we plant, the more stormwater we suck up, put it in the atmosphere. We're not doing anything with stormwater and people that are already here. But what if we did something, for example, we gave them a discount on their stormwater if they plant an oak tree, and they take care of it for 10 years? They get the discount for 10 years. They cut the tree down, the house gets sold, somebody, they pay it back. It's an interesting way of getting the people that are already here to help solve the problem that we have with stormwater. Anyway, this is one of the things we're looking at trying to do, how to build an urban forest. We also presented to you a couple apparent problems, I've heard. One is the proper definition of the critical root zone for trees. We had it wrong in our ordinance, and we brought that to your attention, and we hope that you will vote to correct that properly. And the other is that we really shouldn't be eliminating the tree canopy ordinance from multifamily housing. They're the ones that need it the most, and most likely, they're going to be our more affordable housing going forward. So, we really need to be working with building the environment in and around affordable With that said, we lost our October meeting due to Hurricane Milton, and we never really got a chance to recover that. When we miss meetings, it would be nice, since we only have 11 a year, that we not lose one, and that we reschedule them when that happens. That's all I have to report. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mijak. Seeing none, thank you very much. City Manager?
Onto item 6F, which is Resolution Number 3, 2025, establishing time limits on terms served by appointees to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organizations Citizens Advisory Committee. At the city council meeting on January 28th, 2025, council directed the preparation of a resolution setting defined lengths of term limits for the current appointees to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organizations Citizens Advisory Committee, and establish a time limit on the length of terms for the future CAC appointments. Currently, city council has one member that was appointed to the CAC in 2009, and a second member that was appointed in 2024. The proposed resolution would have the terms of these appointees expire in 2026 and 2028, respectively, with each having the opportunity to be reappointed. The terms for future CAC appointees will be four years in length, with no restrictions on the number of terms that appointee may serve.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir. We can have... One card, it's Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston, and I've been to some, let's say, TPO meetings, and I went with Representative Alex Chamberlain a number of times. And he was on that board for, I don't know, for almost ever. And I believe he did a fantastic job, and I'm just glad he didn't have term limits on him. So I see sometimes term limits as being counterproductive, because we can lose somebody because they believe they're going to be, have term limits required on them or something like that. And I just, I see somebody who can be very valuable in what they're doing, and then you get rid of them, and you lose all their history and all their knowledge and everything else. Because if you have somebody doing a good job, so that's what I've seen. Mr. Chamberlain did a fantastic job, and he was, yeah, he was good. So I'm normally for term limits, but not in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk, are there any other cards? Member Stokel?
Yes. Just to clarify, this will not be term limits, this will just be terms. So there are no term limits on this. So we're just setting how long their term will be, and then they can come and reappoint again if they want, to clarify. And then, so my comment... And then, so my comment would be, I'm fine with the 2026 and 2028 expiration dates for the appointees. My only point of discussion would be, this is a four-year, as it's written, if we wanted to change it to two-year to be in line with some of our other boards. I can go either way, but I just wanted to make sure that we had that discussion in case anybody else. I don't know. I personally am leaning toward the two-year. I'm okay if we decide on four-year. I just think if council members come in, you could potentially have somebody appointed, and then you don't know what's going on with the board. Because I feel like I know more because of these appointments we have, who's on our boards, what they're doing, what their heart is, what their passion is. So I kind of lean toward two-years, and if they're doing a great job, they get reappointed if they want to continue serving. I also think, too, signing up for a four-year term can be a little bit intimidating for an individual that's wanting to volunteer their time. So I'm indifferent on it. I kind of lean toward the two-year, but I'm okay if we decide it's four-year as well.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Nelson?
I think I'm okay with either two or four. To me, this was not a board that has a huge, huge impact, very important. But I wanted to have some kind of limits so that people came back in front of us, and we sort of got an idea of what they were doing. So that was the reason for, I think, us doing that. So I'm okay with four years.
Any further discussion? All right. Well, as I was the one that kind of brought this to the attention, again, I'm just happy that we have a structure in place so that it can be reevaluated. Again, there's nothing against the people that were serving. It was just about, we need to have the process in place so that we know what's going on. So with that being said, I'll take a motion.
Member Nelson?
Move to approve Resolution Number 3, 2025, Establishing Time Limits on Terms Served by Appointees to the Space Coast TPO Organization Citizens Advisory Committee.
Second? I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? City Clerk?
Member Moscosa?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Thank you, City Clerk. Every Moscosa? Do you have anything else to say? Okay, just making sure.
And there's petitions and requests from the public present non-agenda items.
All right. Raise your hand so I can, not everybody's jumping up at the same time. Lynn, did you want to talk?
Yeah.
All right. You're first. That's the benefits of sitting up front, right?
I didn't hear you.
That's the benefits of sitting up front.
Yes, that is the advantage. Hi again, I'm Lynn Golden. And last Monday, we had a meeting with Mayor Connors, and we had discussed some things about our target area, and we had requested a budget for the next five or 10 years where the money has been actually spent in our community. I know your plate is going to be full, but sometime we have to eat things that we have eaten that we no longer want to digest in our community. And I don't know the timeframe, would you be able to, all the things that we requested at that particular timing? I would like for my cousin Brian Brooks to come up because he was, he's an expert. He was on one of these target programs back in the days. So Brian, can you come up? And you can ask him all the questions.
Good evening. I'm Brian Brooks. I'm a resident of Titusville, and I'm not sure why I'm here, but I'm here at Lynn's request, and what am I supposed to do here?
The budget and the internship.
Okay. To give you a little background, when the Titusville Improvement Program started back in the 70s, I was one of the first employees of that program. Under Tom McCollum, June McCullers, Mr. Hickey, Norman Hickey, was the city manager at that time. And so one of the requirements was to, the way I got on the program was, there was a requirement that was agreed to about a community, to have somebody from the target area on staff. And we'd like to see that again. I'm not quite sure how much the budget is. I know we had a lot more back then because we changed our whole entire community. I grew up walking on dirt streets by ditches, no sewers. We had, most of, everybody had separate tanks. And with the community development money that came in for the Titusville Improvement Program, we changed that entire target area. There's been money coming in every year since, and I guess the community is a little bit concerned about how the money has been spent in the last five to 10 years. So Lynn is requesting that we have some type of evidence rendered by you guys to our organization that shows how much and where the money was spent. Another thing we had, we had kind of a community advocacy group. It started out with four gentlemen back during that time, Reverend Stafford, Dr. Laws, Mr. Odell Murray, and Mr. Theodys Ray. And they came to every meeting. The meetings were, we had a business rhythm for the meeting back then. The meetings were every, I think, every week. And those four gentlemen came to every meeting, and representatives from the city, as well as myself, came to those meetings. And we discussed the plans for the target area, and we worked together, hand in hand. The community was held accountable, and the city was held accountable. But we worked together to make sure that we saw change, and we want to kind of get back to that. We know we don't have the budget that we used to have, but the budget that we do have, we'd like to have some input into how that budget is going to be spent. Again, we've got sort of a gap in the program now in terms of representation. I think the last person from the target area that was on the program was Mrs. Houston. I think she retired back in 2007 or something like that.
Sorry, sir, I got to cut you off just because I got to be fair to everybody.
I'm sorry.
I can't give you any more time because your three months are up.
Okay.
I have to be fair to everybody.
I haven't been to the city council meeting in years, so I don't know.
I'm just explaining, like, you know, I love hearing you talk, but yes, you know, from our conversations that we had, I will be getting those detailed informations for you, just still working on it because what specifically was asked for was more detailed than a spreadsheet. So, you know, just bear with me, but...
So is there a date that you're going to come back with the information that was requested?
Yeah, because, you know, Lynn said you guys meet monthly, so I figured they'd give me four weeks to get the information for you.
Okay, so what target date is that? Do you have a definitive date?
I don't have a definitive date. I just said, give me three weeks.
You said three weeks?
Three weeks. Give me three weeks.
So it's three weeks from now, City Manager, you know?
I don't know.
Anybody got a calendar in the pocket? It should be pretty easy to find that out.
Can we say, hold on. Give me one second.
March 18th?
The 18th.
March 18th?
We'll call it St. Patrick's Day meeting.
Tuesday night?
Yep.
Okay, so we've been looking forward for that information.
We can do it on the 17th. It's not a big deal.
I can't hear you, sir.
We can do it on the 17th. It's no big deal.
You're going to do what?
We can do the meeting on the 17th.
Okay, on the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Member Moscosa?
The monies that they're talking about, is that the CBDG grants?
Yes.
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 And so I would say a lot of that money right now, unfortunately, in my opinion, is being spent on improving roads. I'd like to see that money be used in the community, and so that's something that I want to look into for our next cycle. But as you'll notice on our consent agenda today, we're looking at a company that's going to be using that money on roads. But I personally believe that that money needs to be used in the community. So that's something that when we get this report, and hopefully that's something that we can have a discussion with Terry Franklin about what we're going to do with it, not just put it in roads because that's the easy option.
Thank you, Member Moscosa. Dwight?
Dwight Sigler. I didn't come to speak on that, but I would add to it. We had similar situations like this in MEMS, and we had to end up calling HUD into the picture. And HUD sent down a representative because we don't know how much money has come into this program throughout the years, and we need to know exactly where it all was spent because we can't see it. We don't see it. I know some was spent out in River City, some was spent out in the subdivision out here off of Old Dixie, but I'm going to leave that alone. Chief Lau, last time I came in here, I asked about Chief Lau. I'm coming this time to say, we have over 40 unsolved murders in the Black community of Titusville. It don't affect everybody that don't live there, so you don't really know how bad it is. We're not going to sit back anymore and keep seeing the count go up. Under Chief Lau, time is up. The guy retired in 2017, and you acting like he's the only person that can be the chief of Titusville Police Department? Let's go out, put it out there, a job opening, and find a good chief. Because we're sick and tired of that one. Now, I understand he just gets a new contract and a raise. For what? And most of you sit there, can't even tell me that you already knew that. Sarah Stokel, I talked to you about the chief before. Can you ask the city manager, does the chief get a new contract and a raise recently? Can you? Wow.
Please keep decorum.
Can anybody ask the city manager, why does this chief deserve a new contract and a raise, and why we're not opening up that job to find the chief for the city Titusville Police Department? Enough is enough. We're not going to take it anymore. We're going to come down here every time. I'll bring more and more and more people until we get a change. It's up to you all.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I forgot to ask, did you give your name and address for the record?
Dwight Sigler. I don't give out my address.
Okay. Member Mos... Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Good evening, ladies.
Hold on, hold on. Member Moscosa?
Sorry. So I did do a request to ask about Chief Lau's contract because I was curious as a new member, and so I asked for his previous contract, and then he did sign a contract on February 12th. And City Manager, could you explain a little bit about that contract and what it entails and this cost of living raise and all of those things?
Sure. With all of our contract employees, when their contract is up, we do an analysis on what the market rate is for that particular position. So HR department did that, and I'm unable to award that pay raise in one year, so we did it over two years.
All right, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reverend J B Dennis. I'm the president of the National Action Network Cocoa Florida Chapter. The first thing I want to tell you, we are the largest civil rights organization in the United States. We have an airtight relationship with the Justice Department. You've seen us in sample. We done cleaned cocoa up, and now it's time for change in Titusville. What I'm looking, what I'm looking at tonight does not look like a democracy. No way, ain't no way in there. It's time for change. It's time for liberty and justice for all. It's not a dream, it's the law. I don't see a democracy here tonight. For over three decades, city managers, mayors, and council members have held their hand over their heart and lied, saying there is liberty and justice for all in Titusville, Florida. No, there's not. There's no justice in Titusville for the Black man that never have been, and there will not be until we bring the Justice Department in here like we done sample, cocoa, and everywhere else. It's time for change. If that was liberty and justice for all, you would not, you would not have a chief of police on contract who has written racist policies. The city looked like a Jim Crow Atlas bill, policies that allow his officers to shoot only Black suspects in the back who are not a threat, a policy that allows his officers to beat up on Black men in handcuffs. I remember name one. I was up here on the Maury Hall case. I was up here on the James Lowery case in here for the third time. A good chief would have a policy to use beanbag rounds to save lives. A good police chief would not have officers who shoot in cars, who chase high-speed people, have high-speed chases through residential communities. A good police chief would not keep a officer employed who has 22 complaints, and 19 of them was excessive folks against Black people. I was here. I pulled a public record request. It's time for change, Titusville. Witnesses in the Titusville community told the police, James Lowery was not the guilty person that they were seeking. He was shot in the back and murdered, and the officer that shot him got probation. I'm really pissed about it, too. It's time for change, Titusville. Even white folks are tired of the foolishness up in here. Everybody look around. This is not a democracy. You need single-member district. I want to see a Black person up there who's sincere about representing the Black community. I want to see a Latino up there. I want to see somebody from immigration departments up here. That's a democracy. It's time for change. Even white folks are tired of the foolishness that y'all got going on up here. Every road got to end somewhere. When a football team is losing the game, you don't fight the team, you fight the chief. And last but not least, in 1975, when I served as a Marine Patrol Officer...
Thank you, sir.
All 172 of us had beanbag rounds, a doctor.
I appreciate it.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Samantha Charles. You know, the son that got shot in the back, TPD. I want to know when we're going to get their footage or any information of what's going on with my son because I'm not getting no answers from nobody. So can you ask the chief or anybody in here to state or anybody in here that can? I called everybody, every number they told me to call, I called. I've been asking for help. You see, I got the community speaking out for me to help me because you guys won't help me, but y'all here to protect us. So I'm trying to see when will the footage come out? How long they can, what's the policies? Do anybody know?
The investigation is with F D L E.
How long investigations are?
That's the state.
I don't call them.
We don't control how long F D L E goes for. I mean, the last incident that I know of in the press, and Vice Mayor Cole...
I want him to.
Can attest to this. It took over a month before they concluded their investigation.
Over what?
Over a month before the F D L E concluded an investigation in Orlando. So we have no control over the state agency.
But every time I turn around, I get a news report that your chief of police steady doing a conference and saying this on TV, but he ain't even reached out to me and told me nothing but steady doing conference. How you think that make me feel in the family film? He ain't contacted me and told me nothing, but every time I look around, it's a story he got telling, lie after lie after lie, but ain't told me nothing to mom. He ain't contacted me and told me none of this. So how you going to get in front of the news people in an article and do a press conference but ain't contacted me, agree with mom? I still don't have no idea what happened to my son. So I just want to answer, and I want the truth. That's all I'm asking for. I'm asking, oh, go ahead.
This is the chief's M O. Like I said, over 40 murders. This is his M O. He says six weeks before you can show the footage. You go to everywhere else...
Then it went six weeks.
They release the footage in days, three, five days they release it. It doesn't take six weeks for him to hold a... That means that you, that makes us believe you're doctoring something. You going in there and trying to change the tape.
I ain't doctoring. I'm not letting up.
It does not take, and I find out, the chief makes that decision, not F D L E. We know they're going to do their investigation. What we talking about, the body cam footage? He can release that.
They done told five different stories of what he did, of what happened anyways. It's like, everybody got a different story every week.
Over forty cases. Over forty cases, people.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Member Musco.
City manager, does the chief of police have the power to release that footage?
My understanding is FDLE will allow the release when they're at a certain point in their investigation.
Do we know when that might be?
Okay. Member Nelson.
Okay, I'm gonna say this, just as an old prosecutor. One of the reasons you don't release the body cam is because you want to make sure that you talk to all the witnesses before you do that. Yes, sir, you do. You want to make sure that you talk to all the witnesses before you release the body That is one of the reasons you do that. And it's an aggravating process, but you don't want Person A looking at a video and saying, oh, I forgot about that, and adding or subtracting unintentionally to what they're saying. You want to know exactly what they remember at that moment. And everybody who witnesses something like that is going to remember something different. But you want to know specifically what they know, not what. I'm just telling you what the reason is where they.
Hey, guys, member Nelson is speaking.
If you don't want to know the information, don't ask. You know? I can tell you what I know. That's it. Okay?
Sir, you have the floor.
Greetings, City Council of Titusville. My name is David Henry. I'm out of Melbourne, Florida. I'm a former vice president with Reverend Johnny Dennis and the National Action Network. I have a background in family law reform and criminal justice reform, and I spend a lot of time doing grassroots, like registering voters, civic engagement. I got a little background with my former student advisor, Dr. Stokoe there. For 2018, you guys did a proclamation recognizing parental alienation as child abuse. Heidi Peterson came here and represented the subject matter. I'm here on behalf of the, forgive me if I'm pronouncing it wrong, but Mr. Charles, who was recently slain on a law enforcement shooting episode. Had to think hard before I come here to this city council, because I'm out of area. But I reflect on how I've seen Dr. Stokoe over the years, and I think it's prudent to put yourself in the community's shoes. This is technically the Silicon Valley of the world, and a lot of eyes are watching us. And it's kind of an embarrassment for these things to be happening in this jurisdiction when we have so much going on here. And if someone, a grieving parent, mother, is asking for information, I don't know what kind of relationship you guys have with inter-agencies to compel maybe the law enforcement to either release the video sooner, show the video to the family members in private, you know, witness with them, go visit into the community, and things of that nature. I watched the video on social media, and before, when it got sent to me by Reverend Dennis, and I want to say that, you know, council members were, while he was being impassioned and delivering his statement, were grimacing and making ill-begotten faces, if that's a good term to use. And it kind of fired me up. I know that they weren't looking at him as an equal, or whoever was looking at Reverend Dennis that way was not looking at him as an equal, but maybe as a subject beneath that person. I don't feel like that energy comes from Dr. Stokoe at all, and I'm hoping that she can influence, because I don't know any of the rest of you, but I hope if she has influence in that kind of way, that, you know, maybe she can take some leadership on this situation. I know that there's more information to be released, and instead of having a wall between the community and different segments of the community, there can be bridges. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So when everything happened with Chamari, the first thing they want to do is pull up his previous records. But did they pull up the previous records of the shooter? The officer? How do you shoot someone through your windshield? And the same person that you shoot is the same person that called for your help? Do we talk about that? Do any of you up here really care? You, Ms. Nelson, I don't like your demeanor. You don't care. I know you give some what, and you, you did a little something, but you, nothing. So when he got shot, the first thing you want to do is pull up his previous records? Do you pull up the officer's previous records? And then you get angry because people are exposing the same officer that shot someone through his windshield that's sitting in a car that actually called for his help? What did we do? Moved him to Titusville from Cocoa. What did we do? Nothing. Covered it up. Why is it taking so long for justice when you really do not care? You really do not care. And let's just be honest, you don't care. It should not take that long. She should not have this much injustice, and I don't know who put you where you at, but they need to take you where you at. You need to come out. And that is the truth for every last one of y'all. That's all she wanted to do. That's all she wanted to know. Why is that so hard? Why?
Mr. Johnson, oh, no, I guess.
All right. My name is Jermaine McCray, and I come here tonight before you guys as a black male, as a father, as a role model, as an entertainer, and all those things that you guys watch on TV. The thing that kind of gets me is, from my own experiences being a black man, it kind of very saddens me that I come here the second time, and you guys, as our leaders, have no answers. Like I said, if it's one bad apple in the floor, you guys should have been ganged up and got rid of that. The times have changed, it's 2025. Some people do stay in 2024 and things of that nature. But guess what? We are starting to, you know, get together and be positive and try to get rid of the bad people, the bad vibes. And if you guys are not listening, eventually you will listen, or you will be replaced. We will not stop. The thing is, like I said, you guys are not living the life as a black man. You hear me? I don't sell drugs, or none of that, but I bet you if y'all caught me outside right now, y'all probably thought I'd be trying to sell drugs. So right now, it's just crazy. You know, it's hard for me to talk to y'all, because y'all probably don't understand. You know what I'm saying? So you can see me now, and then the next day, I'm dead. And they'll be there fighting, just like they're fighting right now. And it's sad. So at the end of the day, how y'all help the community? I don't see no sheriff's departments, nobody throwing basketball games for these kids in the hood. I don't see no YMCA, I don't see nobody out there talking, nobody helping the kids in the hood, but y'all quit the point, friends. But we don't see no leaders, and that's why we here not screaming at y'all, because y'all are the leaders, and y'all have no answer. Like, come on, man, tighten up or get out the chair. Come on. That's it. I don't want to talk no more.
Thank you. Member Nelson.
I'm going to say, sir, I'm over in that area every Thursday with the kids. During the summers, I'm over there taking them kayaking, taking them to the aquarium, playing crazy eights with them.
Yes, ma'am, but you're not killing us.
No.
It's the police department. They're not out there doing.
But don't tell me.
They're not helping the kids, they're just riding by, you know, just basically standing there waiting for the loose arm, you know, just amping it up.
Well, usually the.
They're not even committing a crime. It's them that's starting to make them commit a crime, and then they get on.
I will say that the police department, the fire department, they're over there four or five times a year. They're cooking hot dogs, they're cooking hamburgers with the kids. It may be not everything we want, but we're getting there slowly.
Yeah, we'll work with you guys, but please, we need answers.
Yeah.
We need answers.
Hi, my name is Carol McGurty, and I'm here because I'm steady crying, I'm steadily looking at Samantha, and it hurts. Now, I think another investigation has to be going on about the murder. I think the Titusville Police has something to do with what happened on 4/5, almost two weeks ago, with the car accident. They've changed stories so much already. They think this, I went through this with them seventeen years ago, because I wouldn't shut up. I spoke by myself, I didn't have all this, but through the grace of God, I won all my fake charges. So there's no way you can just sit up here and tell me that you care, because you don't care. None of you care. And we keep talking about the chief of police. What about the city manager? Aren't you over the police department? Aren't you the one over the police department? So why isn't he doing his job? Why? Why? I'm not gonna cry no more, and I'm gonna keep coming to these meetings if I have to walk and fight like I did seventeen years by myself. Because with God, we cannot lose this battle. You people need to get together, because it's over. It's over in Titusville. I don't care how high, we gotta go, what other level we gotta take it to, but it's just not gonna stop here. So we gotta go Tallahassee, to Washington, because really what I want, I want the Titusville Police Department closed down. I'm sorry, Lau. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but I like you. I want to close down. I want the whole Titusville. Huh?
We need a resource officer.
Yeah, but I love him. See, he's a good man. I want the Titusville Police Department closed down. I want charges brought against these police that's doing this and thinking they can get away with it. So what are you gonna say? What's the city manager, what are you looking at back there? I was. I was here the last week, the other week, and I went back there when I saw the chief of police, and I saw Todd Hutchison, and I told him, I don't like you. You were one of the police officer that made fake reports on me and stuff. Do you know what he stood up and said to me? If you'd watched at the clip, get out my face. Like, he stood up at me. He stood up at me right in.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Have a good night.
Stan Johnston. I've been resident here for over fifty years, but sometime back in about 1952, Christmas, there was, boom! I heard here in Titusville. Christmas, that was, the Moors were bombed, their home was bombed. That's what happened, and they heard it on South Street. There's some people here who have relatives that heard it. 1952, Christmas. Fifty-one? Excuse me. That's close. But so maybe you think, well, it's not that way anymore. Well, in the seventies, I came here in 1970, sometime about '73 or thereabouts, I was in a pool place, Q and Brew, and I was minding myself, and something, I don't know, the guy who was like the bartender, or whatever he was, he got real excited, and I couldn't understand what was going on, I didn't see anything happening there. And so he said, did you see that? Did you see that? Did you see those people? I said, I looked around, I didn't see anything going on. And so he called the police, and the police got there. And there was two blacks that can't come in. I didn't think anything of it, but the police came there, and they just did this thing like this. Pushing the guy around. I didn't understand what he said. He said, what you doing here? What you doing here? And I'm thinking, well, that's something that I don't want to see. There were two nice-looking guys, well-dressed, they were playing pool at the pool table. That's what I saw. And so I left. I left. I didn't know, I was just stayed outside, and I saw them bring them out in handcuffs, put them in the car, take them off. That was here in Titusville. I saw that, I was a witness. I guess, I think y'all remember what I saw was, was one time we had some facilitator from Cocoa here, and I was walking, I was walking up to the podium, and what happened to me? Three police officers came from behind me, attacked me, assaulted me from behind. You guys, most of you guys saw it here. Three police officers assaulted me, shook me, took me out there in the hallway and screamed and yelled, screamed and screamed out in my face. That was here, right here in this room, right here. That's not the only time I was been assaulted by the police officer here. And right now, I'm being arrested. I'm being arrested, and I'm charged with some crimes that never happened. So I want you all to think, we've got some problems here, and I'm a witness to some of it. I'm a victim, too. And there's this thing that says, justice delayed is justice denied. That's what.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Justice delayed is justice denied.
Lynn, did you already speak during public comment?
Yeah. Let me just say one thing to the family. I really don't know of you, this is the first time I've actually seen you in your family. But if you have never lost a child, you wouldn't know how she feels. I don't know if it's your duty, or the police duty, chief louder duty, to come to her as a chief of police. Tell her I'm sorry for what has taken place. I'm working on this to get you some answers immediately. As the mayor of Titusville, even though he's under a contract, but it's your duty as well to look into these things. You're the mayor of the city of Titusville. And we're trying to have a communication among the police department. If they come out and maybe communicate with our black young men, then maybe we can have something in the neighborhood. But let us look into this and give her some answers. I know you say you used to be a prosecutor or whatever, but look into it and stop telling her it's gonna take six weeks, it'll be a year, like the other killings in Titusville. She just want to answer as a mother. And I think as a mother, you can understand, as a mother, as a mother, and any of us, as a mother can understand. Give her something to have some hope about her child. We don't need to bring up anything what he did, because we all have come short of the glory of God. We all have done something that we're not proud of. But we're trying to get this all straightened out. Just give her something that she can hold on to until we get the answer. And that's all I want to say, Mary Connaughton. I know you gonna do it. You gonna get it. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
One of the things the mom wanted was to know where the body was, when it would be released. Yeah, last meeting, we didn't have any answers. But Herman and I got together and called the medical examiner's office and talked to them, and we were able to find out, at least, when are you gonna release the body? When can mom? When can mom see, see him? So we were able to get that part done. Um, I think, I, I didn't have a problem talking to her, and I'm, I'm sure Herman didn't either. But last time, the tensions were so high that it was hard to have a conversation. It was hard to even hear her, or have her hear us. So let me say, if mom has questions, I don't have a problem answering. And I'm sure Member Cole doesn't have a problem answering either. So, um-
I think that's all she wants. Open communication. It's not, you don't have the answer today, tomorrow, but just every now and then, call her and say, "You know what? We're, we're working on this for you."
Yeah.
As a mom.
Yeah.
That's all she's, she's asking. Give me something, and then I can go a little further than that. And I know, City Councilman, you're gonna do it. Mayor Connors, we had a nice meeting with you, and I know you got a plate, I, and in fact, I had the plate in the car, I went and brought a plate for you tonight, because you, a lot of things on your plate you gonna have to eat. And, and you may not be able to digest everything, because you're new to the, the system here. But we know that you're gonna do it. Jo Lynn's gonna do it, Megan's gonna do it, Mr. Cole gonna do it, and Sarah's, we're gonna do it, and all the city officials, the police department, we're gonna do it. That's my friend back there, he comes and see about the community. So I know you're gonna do the right thing. So we won't have this problem again in the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Lynn.
If they was gonna do it, they would be doing it. They're not gonna do it, that's why they said.
Vice Mayor Cole, one second.
Okay, I, I don't know how many of you are at the, I don't know how many of you were at the NAACP meeting, uh, last Thursday night, or whenever it was. And we had an FDLE officer there that spoke. I spoke, and when I spoke, I said that I had just found out that there was a officer-involved shooting in Orlando the first week of January. At that meeting, which was last week, I said FDLE had just released the body cam. So it takes time for these investigations. It hurt me to my heart when one of the speakers said that we don't care. We do care. We care deeply. We worry about the things that happen in this city. Our hands are tied as far as releasing the body cam. The, it works when there's an officer-involved shooting. The sheriff department comes in, collects the evidence, and passes it on to FDLE. And the reason that that is done, so that the investigation is not corrupted within the city, that it doesn't have just the Titusville police eyes on that. We do that to protect the victim, and we do that to protect our police. We, as soon as the law enforcement finds, gets that body cam in, the mother is going to be the first to be able to view that. We do what we can with the tools that we have. And for individuals to get up and say that we don't care, it pisses me off. It pisses me off for someone to stand out there and said, "We're not represented." I'm black. I was brought up in the segregated community of Charleston, South Carolina. And it bothers me when someone tells me that I don't care, because I've been through it myself. I just wanna let you know that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Would you like somebody to go in between you?
Monica.
Okay.
Elizabeth Baker, Titusville resident. What the heck is going on here? For real? For real? Like, tensions are high. Absolutely, we know this. Tensions are high. And Ms. Charleston, I am so sorry. She's right. Like, all this mother wants is some communication. Some communication, let her know what's going on. And I, I, I think that what's happening here tonight, as I'm sitting here, is I'm seeing people hearing, but not listening. You get people coming up here saying they're scared. You get people saying there isn't communication. They're having nightmares, they're being harassed. If they aren't, they're perceiving that they are, and nobody's communicating with them. Is it true that that officer that shot her son came from another city, shooting somebody? Is that true? Is it true that under all of this stress in this city, that our chief's contract was just renewed and nobody knew it? Is that true? Is that true, Mr. City Manager? Any of you people on this council, is that true? Because they're afraid, and I am afraid, and I, every time I think about this mom, I can't imagine what she has gone through, sitting in the hospital for hours and hours and hours, and nobody's talking to her. And I was at the NAACP thing, too, and it was very nice. Y'all brought fruit and cookies, and that was awesome. But there were no real answers. I think that it was, it was nice of Chief Lau to come out and appease the community, but there were no real answers. And I think the answer that we need is, what are we going to do moving forward to make sure that this doesn't ever happen again? What are we doing? What are we doing?
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Anybody else for the good of the order? All right, Member Nelson.
One of the things I was thinking is, we do have a victim advocate, and I don't, she is paid by grant, but I'm wondering if she could be the go-between in these kind of situations, between, uh, to, to at least give the mom, the family, whatever answers we can give her. I mean, one of the things that she asked the last meeting, what she said, "I don't even know where my son is." And to me, that's just sort of a basic, uh, you should at least know where your son is. You should be able to know how to recuperate his body. And I don't know if that would be something that Michelle Flowers would be capable of doing. Not to give her answers that we can't give, but maybe give the family some answers, at least let them know that, yeah, the body is in such and such a place, this is how you get the body back, um, this is how you make those arrangements. To me, talking to her, and I'll sort of say Mr. Cole was there, too. I think part of the problem, part of the mother's frustration, was, um, she was unaware of how to do certain things. I mean, that was what- So, so that's my first suggestion. And my second suggestion was that the police chief, um, did some additional community outreach with the community, because we were talking, I had a visitor Friday, and we were talking about, are there other ways that the police department maybe could interact with the community? Suggestion was made, can we put a police car out that has nobody in it, like we do on US One, to slow people down? Just little things. So those are my suggestions. I don't know if I need to put that in the form of a motion.
Can we have some discussion?
Yeah.
More so, and then we'll talk, yeah, because I-
Well, I thi- I think the first step was, a question for the city managers, has the victim advocate been engaged with the family? I believe so. I, I know the chief has as well.
Okay. Thank you. Member, order. No, no. Order. We're having discussion. Thank you. Member Muskoso.
Yeah, I, what I'm hearing is, I know that there's been some frustration with the process, but I, what I'm hearing is that there's a lack of communication and a, a lack of perceived care. And so that is what I think as leaders, we can improve on. I don't know what that looks like, but it, it doesn't look like me telling you, "This is the process." It, it looks like us caring for you, and that's where we have failed. And so I want, I want to apologize that, personally, that, that I haven't been in communication with you, and that I haven't reached out to you like I should have. So I apologize, and I'm glad that we're having this discussion, because, Ms. Baker, I think you're right. What, what are we doing? What are we doing? And it's not what we want, and the decisions we think that will help the community, it's what the community needs. Because we can come up with all of these grand ideas from up here, but it might not be what the community wants or needs. And so I think that is where we need more input and more conversations, and not just three minutes of you speaking, and then you sit down. It has to be, we need to sit down, all of us, and have these conversations of what we can do and how we can support the city as a whole. And so, and I just wanna apologize for not doing those things. And, and I, and, and so my suggestion would be to have these conversations, and not in a formal meeting like this, where we sit down, and not in a, a meeting where the police of chief is giving you facts and information. It needs to be a conversation. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Member Muskoso. Member Stokel.
Yes, and to that point, where Member Muskoso's saying it needs to be a conversation, I think for me, that's where I'm somewhat confused or a little bit frustrated, is since this whole situation happened, and we, for those that don't know, we get updates from the city manager. So the city manager reports to us, and almost the entire rest of the staff report up through the chain to the city manager. So the only person that we are tasked with hiring and firing would be the city manager, city attorney, and assistant city attorney. That's it. Everybody, nobody else reports to us. So all of our updates come from the city manager. We are not able to talk outside of council chambers. So for me, from my perspective of what's happened since this, is all of my conversations I've had has been that the family has been communicated with numerous times. So for me to sit here and then hear, "Nobody's talking, nobody's talking, nobody's talking," it, I, I don't know now what the truth is. I, I think that's where I feel is, okay, so if, I'm, I'm being told that you, the family has been communicated with several times. Um, I'm also being told, the, the other frustrating part about this is outside of all of us, it's the state and the investigation process, which I believe does need to happen, so appropriate justice can be given. Like, we need outside entities to do that. So unfortunately, when you have outside entities doing that, we have no say over the timeline. It has to go through, I have heard, it could take two weeks, it could take four weeks, it could take six weeks. That's up to the state to go through their process, and to go through interviewing witnesses, to reviewing the footage, everything like that. And to Member Nelson's point, they can't do anything to potentially compromise that investigation, which I'm glad. I, I want that to happen. So we have no control over that part. What we do have control over, though, I think, is understanding better what the process is, because, and maybe that's where we can start, is, so for me, from my standpoint, is, this situation has happened, I was under the impression that this process is happening. I was, I was told that Chief Lau was there as, the very next day or that same day, talking to, to you and the family. And so anytime I was getting my updates, to let you know what was going on. So I don't know if that is, if that did happen or didn't, you're, I feel like you're saying it didn't happen, but I, I don't know. Um, and I think that, maybe understanding that process, so when something does happen, maybe we have a better understanding as council to know what the process is, so we, when we're out in the community, we can help to communicate that message more clearly, to say, you know, "You will be in contact at these different points in time, these are your resources, this is what we can do to help you," if that makes sense. That, that's kind of where I, I would just like to have better clarification on that, so we can do a better job of communicating that.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member, Member Nelson.
Okay.
And then, when he, because I was getting treated bad at the hospital, or whatever. So he had, he saw, he had the chief's phone, personal phone number, and he called him from the hospital, because I was treating me at the hospital. So he personally called him, and that's how we ended up having a meeting the next day, and was talking to me, and everything he said to me was a lie. Like, the whole thing, but I'm not gonna get into that in front of everyone, but everything he told me was a lie. Like, it just brutally played in my face. That's why I'm so mad, because it just, I don't get it, I don't even know what to tell you about it. But everything he played in my face about, everything he reached out to him, if we wouldn't have reached out to him, if we wouldn't, if he wouldn't have called him, he didn't reach out to me. Everybody just come to me on their own. We had to call out the call, we run around. I didn't know who to go to, I was running out for help, because I needed ears about my son. I was treated wrong. Everybody acted so funny.
All right. Member Nelson.
I, I agree with Sarah, and I think this is our opportunity to look at the process. You know, I don't think, nobody wanted this to happen, but the mom needs answers. In a sense, she's sort of a victim also. And so if Michelle could help her out, and maybe contact her when these kind of incidents happen, so that the mom gets some answers, um, some explanation. And I think, for me, it's always easier, and I apologize, this is, this is the prosecutor in me, it's always, for me, easier if I have an idea of what the process is going to be, what to expect. And I think Michelle can help her, you know, this is where the body is, this is where you're going, when you're going to get it back. This is who has this information. This is where the investigation is going. Called, checked on it, they're still working on, it'll be another two weeks, whatever the information is. Not get into the facts, but just sort of guide her on. So I guess my question is, can we do something like that? And it's a grant position, so, you know, obviously, we have to follow the grant.
Who are you asking the question of?
Us.
Okay.
And Scott. Um, and the op, well, can we find out if we can do something like that? Yeah. And then maybe find out if we can do additional meetings with the community? Not necessarily about the specific case, but in general, to discuss maybe other, other policing methods in the community. So that's my request, if you could let us know.
Thank you, Member Nelson. You know, obviously, this has been really tough on our community, and I feel like I've been, you know, working overtime to just try to be there and listen, because unfortunately, I know Lynn thinks I have all the power in the world as mayor, but I don't. I just have one vote up here. But what I can be is that, the sounding board and that, that listening tool. Last night, I met with the North Rivered Ministerial Alliance, along with the NAACP. I met with Concerned Citizens Group, Unity Within the Community. I mean, I've been doing everything I can to connect with every organization that serves that community I possibly can, to- to just constantly communicate whatever information I have, the process, everything. And then at the same time, using it as an opportunity to listen to the concerns of the neighborhood. So, you know, I think you have a very engaged council that wants to hear and wants to listen. In fact, my report tonight, or it was none of the stuff I made up. It was just stuff I've been hearing from talking to people in the community, things I felt like we needed to bring up from concerns from the, uh, from, that people were bringing to me. So, just know that we, we do hear you, we do care, and, uh, we're, we're going to get through this together. So, thank you to everybody who has spoken tonight. Um, Member Muscoso?
I think we have to remember, uh, we're talking about the life of someone. And, um, yes, there's a process to how this works, but, um, obviously, there's been a failure somewhere, um, with communication. And that is, all the process and all of that can be an email. We have to sit with the community, I think. And, um, and I, I don't feel like we're reading the room well. I feel like something's being said to us, and we're coming back with s- process and procedure, when we really just need to be caring. And, um, so, we, I can't control the chief of police. I, I have no power to do that. What I can control is my behavior and how I respond. And so, let's challenge ourselves, let's get uncomfortable, let's reach out to the community, let's meet with people, because I think that's the only way these things are going to, um, get better. Not, not by procedures, procedures are good, we have thousands of procedures. Things are going to get better when we sit down and we communicate. And so, that might be uncomfortable, but I think as leaders, that's what we're here for. And so it's a challenge to myself as well.
Thank you, Member Muscoso. Vice Mayor Cole?
I think we've heard from all the members of council that we care deeply about this, and there, there, there is probably a systemic problem within the community. I've talked to a number of you in the community and said, "I was willing to sit down with any group that you could put together and let you tell, you, let you tell me what the specific problems are." And I'm still willing to do that. And if you've listened to all five of us up here, I think each one of us, on our own, we can't come to you the same time. It has to be individually, but we are willing to come out and try to resolve whatever problems, whatever conflicts. If you feel unsafe, you're members of our community. We don't want you to feel unsafe. We don't want you to feel like, every time you see a police officer, he's coming after you. It hurt me to my heart to hear the young gentleman up here say that the first thing a police officer would think about when he looks at him is that he's a drug dealer. And, and I don't, I don't think that's true. I hope that it isn't true. But, all I'm saying is, if you guys want to meet with us, each one of us, and I'm going to speak for city council, because I listen to the folks up here talk, we are willing to sit down, find out what the problems, and to best of our ability, try to resolve them.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Since taking office, I have not turned down a single meeting. Every email I got, I have personally responded to myself, and nine times out of 10, they usually get a phone call as well. So, I am very much accessible. And to tell you the truth, when that guy came up here, the first thing I thought was, "That guy has a lizard on his shoulder." Did you guys notice that?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if it was a service lizard or anything else. I think, I think it was real. But with that being said, uh, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and, uh, we'll come back with consent agenda after that. Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. Previously, when we did board appointments, you had an appointment to the Affordable Housing Committee, and there was a question about the residency, and you asked, um, Terry Franklin, and I think they nodded that, "Yeah, it's a year", and you asked me, "I cannot, for certainty, I don't have that code in front of me." So, if you're asking me 100%, I would need to look at that one year for that particular board. If that has anything to do with your decision, you could certainly reconsider that. If it doesn't, but I want to let you know, I'll come back to you and update that for you on that one-year requirement for the AHAQ. If, if that has any, if that any bearing on, you can reconsider. But if you're good with your decision, that's fine. I just want to let you know, that's what staff said. With 100% certainty, I don't have that in front of me. I know most of your boards are a year, but I just want to let you know, if, I'll report back to you on that specific board and whether that year does apply.
Thank you, City Attorney. I, just from speaking for myself, um, I think it's a challenge when all the boards are a little different. So, I think having just the consistency of living in the city for a year, I think, makes sense to me. Uh, but if anybody disagrees on council, you know, we can speak up. All right.
So, we'll report back to you on that.
They'll report back to us on the official qualifications, but I don't think, uh, we're going to reconsider it this time. Thank you.
Onto consent agenda. Um, we have items A through F. City Council, do you have any questions for staff on consent agenda items A through F? City Council, would you like to pool any of the consent agenda items for further discussion? City Clerk, are there cards for consent?
Two cards.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, approved Titusville Police Department's 9/11, uh, Center Training Funds. Consent agenda item 8B, approved the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Consent agenda item 8C, approved change order number five for the Blue Herring Clarifier modifications. Consent agenda item 8C, approve change order number five for the Blue Herring Clarifier Modifications. Consent agenda item 8D, approve FY 25 CBDG Road Resurfacing Project Contract Award. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the award for the consultant services for rate, financial, and management services. Consent agenda item 8F, approve change orders number one through six for fuel tank replacement. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for the Special Magistrate Services. All right, City Clerk, cards?
We have Stan Johnston, who wants to speak on items A, C, D, and E.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, Titusville. I guess I have three minutes, is that correct, for all those?
That is correct.
Well, I'll have to talk real fast, so listen. Is that, let's start with the first one, 8A. Is that, I'm for this very much. In fact, it says about dispatchers and training them, because I had a, I had a phone call. Oh, they're not here, that, there's two girls back there, Elizabeth Baker and Estelle. One of them called me and said, hey, the Titusville Police Scanner says that you should be arrested. They want, they need to arrest you. And that was on the October 25th. And I said, I'll just call Titusville Police Department tomorrow, so they can pick me up. I mean, they should know where I live. So I called them the next day, and I said, the dispatcher, I said, hey, you know, I'm here, you can come and arrest me. Well, he said, we don't have any order to arrest you. So they said, but we know somebody who might have something. So they referred me to Officer Logan, who I have met before. And so first of all, I started, I said, I gave him his, on the phone, I said, I gave him his Miranda rights. I don't think he appreciated that, me giving his Miranda rights. And I, so I talked about him about, you know, about this arrest thing and so forth like that. And then, wham! He hung up on me, just like that. And I could hear it, wham! I mean, you know, normally you think it's just a click, but it wasn't a click. So I called the Titusville Police Department back again, and just, you know, about two minutes later, I called them, maybe a minute later. And I said, you know, here's what happened. The guy just hung up on me. Said, well, I'll see if I, so then he referred me to his supervisor, that's Mr. Torres. And so the first thing I did, in a conversation with Mr. Torres, I did what? What do you think I did? I rated him as Miranda rights. Of course I did. And I don't think he appreciated that either. So, so we talked for quite a while about, you know, that, about me being arrested and so forth. And he said, hey, Stan, you know, he didn't say Stan, but he said, we will not arrest you unless you interfere with the work of the contractor out there on the project site. I said, okay, thank you very much. So I wanted to make sure, because actually, I called, I called the police department before anybody else to call the police department, and asked for a case report, and they didn't give it to me. First time they didn't give it to me. Anyhow, so when I went out there, first thing, they did arrest me. And not only did they arrest me, they never told me what I was arrested for, until I found out when I was in court the next day. So I think that this is a, I am for this training, and I think it should be police officers, too. My understanding is that police officers are trained to lie. I hear that many times.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
Tony Shifflow on item D.
City Clerk, did you say B as in boy, or D as in dog?
D as in dog.
All right, thank you.
Shifflow, Tropic Street. Boy, am I against this road resurfacing project in the CDBG target area. I have a map here. I would like to have a lot of time to point out to you that every street in here is in the district that Brad is wanting to consider West Titusville and change all the zoning, so it's all mixed use. And now they want to pave the streets. None of the streets in this neighborhood, none of the streets in this neighborhood need to be resurfaced. It is a waste of money, and this is exactly what all these concerned citizens have been coming up here and talking about. And what they invited you to the meeting about is where has that CDBG money gone? They do not see the improvements in the neighborhood that that money is destined and could be used for. Paving these streets that do not need to be paved, well, maybe Dummett. They said, when they drive over it, Lynn says, my car goes clickety, 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 click. So maybe Dummett needs to be, but I drive those streets all the time. I live in that neighborhood, and there's nothing wrong with the streets. And anyway, shouldn't the street money, Member Cole, shouldn't streets be paved with our taxpayer money that goes into Public Works? Isn't that a Public Works? CDBG money is to target areas, to target things that will improve poverty areas. Paving streets, Mr. Cook, that do not need to be paved, is a waste of money. And it's $364,188.90. It shouldn't take that much money to pave Dummett. There are over five houses in the neighborhood that the concerned citizens have identified that could use CDBG money to be renovated and rehabbed and made perfectly nicely habitable and probably affordably also in that area, because, you know, everything is pretty poor there. So I really object to the CDBG money being spent paving roads, which should be public work money. And the particular streets, look to the south of South Street. That neighborhood is sorely neglected in the areas. Maybe some of those streets, which I don't drive very frequently, maybe some of those streets need to be paved. But none of these streets, except Dummett, where Ms. Golden's car goes clickety, clickety, click, should be paved. Thank you for letting me rant. I really object to this. And when we get those five or six years passed of the CDBG money and see what has not been done with it, you're going to hear lots of upset, concerned citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow. City Clerk, any other cards? All right, Member Stokel?
Yes, I have a question for staff for clarification, and we might have to come back to it. But I feel like, I remember CBDG funds, I can't remember the exact percentages, but they can only be spent on certain things, first off. And then even within that, there's certain percentages. And maybe Member Nelson knows, back before, we had talked about trying to do programs and stuff, and we were very limited on what we could do with those funds. And I think a big portion of it had to be infrastructure projects. If somebody in staff knows that, that would be helpful. If not, I just wanted, especially for our newer council members, I remember personally being frustrated by our limitations on what we can do with that grant funding. Another thing I have inquired already about staff with is, if we're using it on roads, what this means is, we're able to do more roads than we normally are because of this additional funds. And personally, one of the complaints I get is, when is my road going to be repaved? Like, I'm consistently getting questions regarding that. So I'm always in favor of trying to do more roads, so I'm not sure about, they don't need them repaved yet, because I tend to hear the opposite side of things. But just some things for us to think about, I think, moving forward, especially when we go through the process moving forward. Looking through and seeing what we can actually spend those funds on, we are limited.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, Member Stokel, I would agree. I did sit down with Terry Franklin, and we went over, she went over the same thing, that there are certain things that it can be spent on. However, I asked her point blank, out of all of these years of doing this, have you seen a change in the community? And she said, no. And so she told me that this is low-hanging fruit, because they know that they could get the streets repaved without going through a lot of different things. Whereas, maybe there's a project that the community wants, and it might be a little bit more difficult. They might have to spend more time on it and meet with the community and ask questions. But I think we need to be proactive in that. Like, if, I can't attest to whether these streets need to be repaved or not. I would like to know if they were on the schedule, when's the last time they were repaved? But I would like us, instead of saying, well, this is the easy option to repave resurfaced roads, what can we actually do to, if we're going to talk about affordable housing, because that's what this money is for? I mean, it can be used for these things, but what can we do to actually improve the community? Because it's targeted for a specific area. And so I think that is kind of what I'm hearing from the community, and that is why they're asking what's happened in the last five years. Just because the easy option, the one that we know will get approved, is roads, doesn't mean that that's the only option that we need to go for. I think we need to kind of look outside the box. And I know that Terry Franklin has met with many of our concerned citizens. But, but there obviously is a disconnect with projects. And I know that there was a talk about, I think, doing a pocket park as well. And that fell through, because those funds were not going to be able to be used, and that. But instead of saying, well, that didn't work, let's put it in roads, let's look for something else that it could be used for. So those are kind of my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. Member Nelson?
So I do have a question for Mr. Cook. I understand you evaluate the different roads to determine which roads are going to get paved, is that correct?
We actually had a consultant do it last year, so we have a PCI rating of all our streets.
Okay.
So yes, they rate it from a zero to 100, zero being failed, and 100 obviously being a brand-new road.
Did the consultant also look at the streets south of South Street?
Yeah, every street in the city got graded, yes.
Okay.
All 190 miles have been, PCIs were updated a year ago.
So these are the streets that the consultant is saying need help?
Yeah, and they, and we try to group them together, because what ends up, in the past, happened, we paved two streets out of eight. And then the ones around them get paved in off-year, so we tried to group them together. I believe we paved south of South Street in the last decade. I know it got all repaved. We have been more aggressive in the target area, because it is a much smaller area. So where we try to turn the city streets over every 30 years, these are going to be closer to 15 or less, because they are, we are able to commit to these areas with dedicated funds, as opposed to general fund that is being spent over the entire city. So the cycle of these streets will happen faster than the rest of the city will currently.
Since Terry isn't here, can I ask you, what else could we use the funds for besides streets?
From my experience, we've done sidewalk infill and street resurfacing. We did do Ronald Street, what's a dirt street, probably 2008 time period, where we actually paved the street and put sewer in.
Okay.
So we do have options in infrastructure, it could be utilities. We haven't done a utility expansion, I think we only have one area that we could expand currently with sewer, to a septic area, then it may fall outside the target, the target area revises. But we have paid to do sidewalk infill. This is the first time we've paved a street in about three years in the target area with CDBG funds. We had dedicated last year, we didn't use any the two years prior, we're all sidewalk infills.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and I believe the bus shelters were paid also, the few that Terry had done, were under the same. I don't know which, Terry works many different pots of money in that program. But I know from my experience, we've done utilities, dirt street paving, regular road resurfacing, and sidewalk infill.
I would, I would like to see his look at other options. I will say, for me, I'm sort of interested in getting sewer lines through there, because I think the sewer septic tanks are impacting our river. And so to me, the more people we get over to the sewer system as opposed to the septic system, the better off all of us are. And it looks like that's an area where potentially you could do extra sewer lines.
I know we have one area down south near Sycamore that does have one street that is septic, that we targeted as septic sewer program.
Okay.
So it's something we could look at coming forward as a CDBG application when the grant cycle opens next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yes, a follow-up question to Member Moscoso. Since you did meet with Terry, and she said that how the funds are currently being spent are not making a difference in that community, did she give you guidance on what we can spend the funds on that she feels like would make a difference in the community?
She said that she had asked the community, and that they couldn't come up with a consensus. And so that's why they put those funds there. I'm kind of looking at, I know that Mayor Blake and Coco, they use a lot of those funds for their affordable housing. I mean, I just did a quick search, there are so many different options, senior services, veteran services, obviously waters and sewer improvements. There are so many different things. And I know that roads are important, but as Kevin said, if we're going to do it every 15 years, and these streets are getting repaved more often, maybe there is something to what Ms. Shifflow is saying, that perhaps this isn't where the money should go. And so all I'm saying is, I would like to work a little, like, closer with Terry Franklin when this money comes in, and with the concerned citizens, and whatever group is interested in it. And you might have more information on this, but I just think we need to, perhaps, because we didn't use this money for a few years, and that's why it kind of built up. And so I would, I would love to see this go into actual, like, you can buy property with this. And we do own city property, but you can build housing with this. You can do so many different things. And so let's look at what the needs are in the community. And it doesn't sound like, I've never heard someone in that community come up and say, our roads are terrible. They might be saying that, but I'm hearing a lot of, we need housing, or we need services for our children, things like that.
Okay.
Sorry, not right now. No. Let's see, I'm sorry. All right, so we were...
I don't have a card.
Yeah. Sorry, I got to follow the rules. Yeah, I think with the CDBG funding, you know, 70% has to go to infrastructure projects. When we had our first presentation, I believe that was our first meeting on council, if I'm correct, Member Moscoso. And the concerning thing to me was, we only have a small portion that we can give to nonprofits. And the fact that we only had four apply was an alarming stat for me, because that means we're not communicating the correct information out there. Because I don't know a single nonprofit that won't take free money if they know it's available. So we just got to do a better job this time around of just over-communicating that information to the public. And that's a mission that I've clearly been on for the last four months. So I'm excited about doing that and getting that information out to the public, so we can get their input on CDBG funds. Now, with that being said, is there any further discussion on? Oh, she just, oh, you snuck one in there on me, Lynn.
Yes.
City Clerk, is there any cards?
Lynn Golden.
Sorry, Ms. Lynn.
I'm enjoying the meeting tonight. Lynn Golden again. The money that the roads in Titusville, we were thinking, maybe perhaps the city should be taking that money to resurface the roads. The money, Terry, that we thought we were going to get on the corner of Blues Grocery, that was supposed to be something beautify with Jonasville name on it. But when we realized that HUD said that money was not going to be used for this little pocket park, which we were very upset about it, because Terry had a consultant to come in, we had a meeting, we were diagramming things, how we really wanted that area, said some maybe coconut rocks, couple of plants to beautify. But when we realized that land only from here to there only belonged to the city, all the land behind Blues Grocery was not city property. So we were upset about that. Another thing is that the money she suggested maybe plant. Our question was, who's going to put plants all the way down to Leon Street? Who's going to take care and maintain those plants? I'm not going, I'm too old to be digging, and I'm not going to be out there watering plants. Where's the water going to come from? So these are the things we were asking her. We don't want to spend $100,000 in plants beautifying when no one's going to take care of it. Is the city going to take care of the plants? Maybe, that's, give that duty to them. But we just want, we don't see anything. We had people come to a meeting, say they left Titusville in 30 years, and they still see the neighborhood looks the same. There's nothing changed. I would advise everyone, if you have not gone through... I would advise everyone, if you have not gone through the neighborhood, the Leon Street, over on the avenues, all doing there, you will see things that money could be used for. And so I would ask everyone, on your day off, just ride through the neighborhood and then get your pincer and pad and start writing some things down. And you say, "Oh, I didn't know that" because you don't live in the neighborhood. So maybe you haven't thought about trying to drive through the neighborhood. And I'm getting a little tired coming to meetings and saying, "This is what we want." And nothing has been done.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Yeah.
Member Nelson?
Ms. Lynn, if you want trees, see that lady over there? That's your lady.
Well, as I told her, she tried to convince me about trees. Trees are beautiful, you can read a book. I told her I have a lot of oak trees, so therefore that's not a benefit for me, raking leaves all day long. I even told her to look at Blues Grocery. Those trees are not beneficial. No one's over there at that grocery store reading a book. And therefore, those trees need to be cut down, too. I know she's doing a project on the Camel's Park, but we don't need $100,000 in trees down to Leon and no one is going to take care of those trees. I appreciate what you're trying to do to help us beautify, but that's not one of the things that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, did somebody throw in a card real quick?
Yes, Ms. K. Saint On.
I didn't say anything against trees.
K. Saint On, Maryland Avenue Titusville Tree Team. I have spoken with Lynn and I have spoken with Terry about trees. And the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Action Plan has a beautification through trees, planting trees for the neighborhood. And I talked with Ms. Golden about it. If the community were to be further educated about the benefit of trees and the reality that if native trees were planted along the streets, they would not require very much maintenance at all. In fact, in the right of ways, all you would need to do is mow around them. That's what the residents would need to do. Just mow around the tree and don't mow over it, okay? That's the first thing. Don't mow it down and then let it grow. Yes, it would need some water initially if it wasn't planted during the rainy season. But I try to plant the trees that the tree team plants in the rainy season. And I'm more than happy to work with this community and talk with them about the benefits of trees, reducing the temperatures, increasing our health benefits. Trees do that by reducing the temperatures, allowing people to go outside and interact and exercise more and so forth. But if the people don't want trees and then, and if the money is for their neighborhood and they want to spend the money in other ways that benefit them, then that should be the priority. I definitely agree with that. So it is definitely up to that community what those funds should be spent for. I prefer trees, but I have a house to live in. If they need houses, that should be a priority. Then let's, if they're after, they need trees. But there are many vacant lots along De Leon where trees could be planted, where it would be the city's responsibility therefore to take care of it because there's no house there. But she was concerned that homeowners would not want a tree in the right of way in front of their home because they might need to maintain it. But there again, if they were native trees, they really wouldn't need much maintenance whatsoever. So it's a discussion. You just have to continue to, we spent two years educating council about the benefit of trees and it would take some time to talk with this neighborhood and interact with them about the benefits of trees and why you would want a tree to shade your home, to shade your yard. But it needs to be a nice, healthy tree, the right tree, right place. And all those things need to be taken into consideration. But since my name was mentioned, I thought I might give you a little explanation.
Thank you. Did anybody else throw a card in?
Yes, sir, Susan Pender.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Susan Pender. I'm actually one of the people Lynn said that grew up in Titusville. And I'm back, I retired. So I've been gone for 50 years. I left here in my twenties. And she's correct. I see so many things that could be improved, updated, demolished, started all over again. The trees thing, we got a lot of trees in our community. They need grooming. We got overgrowth and vacant lots that need to be cleaned. That could add more beauty to the community than anything else. Abandoned homes that either need to be demolished or whatever. I live on First Avenue. First Avenue doesn't have any sidewalks, so we miss the cut on that in the community. But grooming, and I believe in trees. I used to live in California, so trees and palm trees, everything's there. But if they're not maintained, it makes the community looks like a dump. And is that the city or is that the owner of the property? Or if it's city property, is it being maintained in our community like it is being maintained in other communities that have the glamour look that, oh, yeah, this is where I want to live? And I've invested in renovating the house I grew up in in 1957 when my parents built it. So I've come back, I'm bringing improvement to my street. But I have an abandoned house on the corner across from me. And there are trees that need to be cut down. And trees impact your insurance. I had to cut down whatever trees that was around my mom's house so I can get insurance because that's the first thing to look at, are there any trees? And so, you know, trees are great, but if they're not groomed or they're too close to your home, it's going to cost you or you may not get any home insurance at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, any others? All right, thank you very much. All right, kind of motion? Member Nelson?
I'm going to make that motion. I think as we enter into our new year, we need to start looking at CDPG funds and other ways to use it. But for right now, I'm going to move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Point, clarification, there was A through G.
A through G?
Thank you very much.
Second.
At least I have a motion and I have a second. All those, or any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I just want to confirm.
I was looking, too. I didn't see any other questions in there. I appreciate you double-checking on me. City Manager?
Onto 9A, which is the easement vacation number three, 2024, for 1558 Meadowlark Drive. Now, in 19 February, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended tabling this item to an undetermined future planning and zoning commission to allow the applicant to work with staff. That vote was seven-zero, so staff is recommending that council do the same to table it without moving forward without P&amp;Z's recommendation would not be wise.
Member Nelson?
Do we have a date?
They did not have a date.
It'll have to be re-advertised.
Okay, so just table it till whenever. Okay.
Is there any?
I can, I will move to table item 9A, easement vacation application number three, 2024, 1558 Meadowlark Drive.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. City Clerk, are there any cards on this matter? Stan, we're on 9A Meadowlark Drive and we're motioning to table it.
All right, because it was confusing the way that was worded because that's what it says that they didn't give it as a choice. But anyhow, I'm especially wanting you to table it because the drawing for the easement, working the easement is out of scale. It's just not scaled. It shows a 20-foot wide easement and then it shows less than half of it being 10-foot. So it's out of scale and so that's not acceptable. And I'm not sure what's going to happen because it's on a, it's like a hill, hill there. It's several feet high above the bottom of the ditch that it has to be filled in to do this. And it's just not quite represented on, also on the architectural rendering is incorrect. It shows a fence that's, actually that goes down to the bottom of the ditch several feet and it doesn't show it that way. It shows that it's flat land in there. It's not flat land. And that's according to the, according to the plans, unless it was not built correctly according to the plans. There's a big ditch in there. So do table it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk, are there any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Next item will be a quasi-judicial item, so City Attorney will read the quasi-judicial procedures.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on the quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
To staff and applicant, please ensure that all witnesses that tend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there's anyone present who has not sent an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding this quasi-judicial item, said visitor opinions shall be disclosed. No.
All right, thank you very much. City Attorney?
Yes, this one for the public. This public hearing on small-scale amendment number 10, 2024, will include both the land use ordinance, which is ordinance number eight, 2025, and the rezoning ordinance, number nine, 2025. Therefore, anyone who desires to speak should address both the land use and rezoning ordinances during the speaking time. At the close of the public hearing, council will consider each ordinance separately. And I'd like to read the titles at this time.
Thank you.
Ordinance number eight, 2025, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on .3 plus minus acres of land, having Brevard County Partial ID number 21, 3533784.01, from commercial high-intensity to high-density residential, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number nine, 2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number five, 1993, at the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on .3 plus minus acres of land, having Brevard County Partial ID number 21, 3533784.01, from the community commercial CC zoning district to the multifamily high-density residential R3 zoning district, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
The applicant's requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with a rezone to bring an existing multifamily residential use, a quadruplex, into conformance with the city's future land use map and zoning. The property is a triangular with a frontage on three roadways, which is North Granus Avenue, Norwood Avenue, and Jones Street. The property is generally located east of Dray Field, Stormwater Park, and south of South Washington Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, recommend approval of this seven-zero. Mr. Parrish is here to present this to you, your public hearing on SSA 10, 2024.
Ms. Parrish?
I'm going to begin on page 519 of your packet. It's the second page of the city staff report. And I'll just point to you the zoning and land use history on this particular piece of property. You'll see the property had a R3, which is a multifamily zoning district, supplied to the property in 1964. 1980, the city's existing land use map identified the subject property as residential. In 1981, the city adopted a land use plan that designated the subject property and several others to the east as commercial high-intensity. In 1993, the city administrative rezoning changed the zoning on the property from R3 to CC presumably to make the zoning consistent with the commercial high-intensity future land use designation on the property. And then in 2008, the city council adopted what's called the Park and Dixie Small Area Study. And that study acknowledged the non-conforming residential uses on the property surrounded by Jones St. Street, Robbins Avenue, and Norwood Avenue South, which includes the subject property. Further, the study recommended changing the future land use designation on these properties to one of the residential designations. However, that was not completed. On page 523 of your packet, we did go into a review of the consistency with the comprehensive plan. And I'm sorry, beginning on page 522 of your packet and subsequent page. So we looked at the existing commercial land use and the proposed residential land use. We find them both be consistent with either choice. Either you decide to keep the commercial on there, the comprehensive plan, land use designation would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. If you decide to go forward with the request to change it to high-density residential, we also believe that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. I know there's going to be one question about the fact that this property is along Norwood Avenue. And I do want to point out on page 523, we made a statement here related to that. We believe that Norwood Avenue is a local road which connects two arterial roads, North Washington Avenue and Garden Street. Local roadways are typically designed for slower speeds and lower volumes and have numerous single-family residential driveway connections. Norwood Avenue is not a typical local road in that it does not provide access to single-family residences. There is a multifamily development and several non-residential developments that access onto Norwood Avenue. This development pattern appears to cause Norwood Avenue to function more like a collector road than a local road and suggests that the property is capable of supporting higher density like Rock Creek Road, as stated in that particular policy related to access and location criteria for the residential land use category. I'll point to the maps to kind of clarify what I mean there. On page 526 and 27 of your packet, I'm just going to point to the findings and recommendation. Our findings in summary, the surrounding area is predominantly residential in nature. The Park and Dixie Small Area Plan was adopted by the city council in 2008, which recommended changing the future land use designation on the property to a residential designation. That plan was adopted after that policy was added to the high-density residential land use. On page 537 of your packet is a survey of the property. And you can see that there's an existing quad building, a four-unit multifamily building on this property. It's been there for several decades. On page 540 begins the map, series of maps that we've included in the packet. And you'll see the aerial of this property. You'll also see the location of this parcel related to Norwood Avenue, Dray Road, Park Avenue, and South Washington and Garden Street. On the next page, you'll see the land use as existing versus proposed. And if this is adopted, this is what it will look like. It will change from commercial high-intensity land use... It will change from commercial high-intensity land use to high-density residential land On the next page, page 542 of your packet, you'll see the rezoning map. If the rezoning after the land use ordinance, if adopted, the rezoning would have to be considered. And if that is adopted, it will change the property from commercial to residential, which is currently how the property is being used, is residential. On page 551 is the Dixie Plan. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing. This was a, basically a study of not just this property, but the surrounding area. But one particular recommendation is on page 565 of your packet, of your agenda rather. And you'll see the beginning of the recommendations from that plan. And specifically, the recommendation that's related to this particular property states that the, this property should be changed to a residential land use. And that, that is illustrated on page 567 of your packet, which is part of that Dixie With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this.
Thank you, Brad. Um, I have one question on page three of the staff report. Excuse me. Uh, am I correct? The land use of there is a single-family residence, but zoned community commercial, so we might have to do this again?
This request was made by the property owner, so it's possible the adjacent property owner uh, may come in with a similar request.
Thank you. Member Stokel.
Yes. Did you say that there's currently a quadruplex on this piece of property?
Yes.
So is, it's in non-conforming as it stands right now?
Correct. And if it is destroyed, it cannot be rebuilt.
Okay. Do you know if they are planning to rebuild a quadruplex or, or why is this application coming before us?
Uh, my understanding is they want, they're trying to secure, um, it has to do with financing and they needed to get something that says that the property is conforming.
Okay. And then if we were to pass this, what's the maximum uh, number of units that would be allowed on this piece of property?
It'd be at this max, it's four units.
Four?
Yeah, they'd be able to put four units on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? City Clerk?
Edward Bremer.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your time. We bought the property in 2017. Um, I, I renovated it inside and out. We have good tenants in there. We're surrounded by residential all around us. And it, to us, it just wouldn't make sense to leave it the way that it is because if it, like you said, if it burnt down or over 50%, we couldn't rebuild it to what it is. I'm not trying to do anything else with the property. We can't make it any bigger. It's just four units. We just wanna be able to cover it in case something ever happened to it. And that, that's why we're here. We went to the zoning meeting last month and um, they approved at seven, I think it was seven to nothing, and so that's, that's why we're here. So.
Thank you very much, sir. Member Muscoso.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I, um, I looked it up on Google Maps and I've seen the improvements that you have made on that property and I just wanna thank you for that, for, I mean, I think it has improved that area and um, and so just thank you for taking it from what it was to what it is.
We appreciate it. And, and we did, we worked, you know, we did it ourselves and we've worked hard on it and it's, 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 it's the, in my mind, it's the nicest part of the neighborhood now. So we just wanted to be able to keep it rather than if something happened to it, happened to turn it into warehouses or something. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I, I looked at this and I was surprised to see it was already a quadruplex on there, so I found that out. And uh, as far as I'm concerned is that I have seen numerous errors in our, our zoning map where it says like it's supposed to be commercial and there's no way you can put commercial in it and vice versa. And this looks like a possibility of that particular type of error that the city has perpetuated for years. In this case is that I think that it appears to me is that, is that what cities should do is should not charge them anything. They should just go ahead and do it. Just do what they say and without having the council being uh, active in this because I just don't think it's right. That, in other words, if, if it's built that way, that you could ask for it without having charging them any, any money at all because it's, it's just not right. And I've seen it happen before in Titusville. Nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
No more cards.
Thank you, Member Muscoso.
I would have to agree with Stan on this. I was kind of confused of why we, they were having to come before us and ask for this um, rezone and then having to pay a fee as well. And so I don't know if City Manager or City Attorney can speak to that. Um, but I also kind of had the same feeling as Mr. Johnson on this one.
That is the process. Council put that land use and zoning on the property as it exists now and the only way to get that off is through a public hearing and advertising. That's the, and this is a different council, so.
And so why wasn't it, I mean, changed years ago?
Well, my understanding, and Brad can correct me, is that originally it was residential. Council came and put the commercial on top of it. And now this council is going back to the original residential. And the only way to change land use and zoning is through the public hearing process and advertising. That, that's the only way it can be done, by a council.
Thank you.
Member Stokel?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, to play devil's advocate, uh, we do want these to go before us typically and it, that is our job as council with the form of government that we have is we set the vision, we set the land use and like, uh, City Attorney said, as we're going through the process and Brad brings things to us, we change land use and zoning all the time just uh, for the future and our comp plan. So while I, I see what you're saying and the point, but um, I, we do need these things to come before us.
I mean, there could be situations where council administratively on its own sees a problem and, and wants to take that on. And then there, then the property owner may concur and it may be some reduction that way in a price because that's something that council is wanting to do administratively. This is one where a property owner brought it to you.
I just wanna make one comment about what council possibly made the decision to put this commercial on that property in that area. And this is not the only one. It's the intent at the time when the zoning was being created was that you create something that's non-conforming and eventually that property will convert to the correct land use or zoning or be used appropriately. But a lot of times that doesn't happen. It takes years or sometimes decades and doesn't happen at all. So then you look back at it and say, well, we probably need to make a correction. So I think there may have been an attempt to try and turn this entire area into something that was commercial.
I think we gave them, what, 36 years?
They had plenty of time.
Plenty of time. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from council? At this point, the public hearing is now closed. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve ordinance number 8-2025, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comp plan of the City of Titusville, um, from commercial high intensity to high-density residential.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Huh?
I was just saying, I think I got it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You did great. You did great. Any further discussion? All right. City Clerk?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Muscoso?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Can I have an additional motion, please?
Move to approve ordinance number 9-2025, amending ordinance number 5-1993 by amending the zoning map, um, by changing the zoning classification from community commercial zoning district to multifamily high-density residential zoning district.
Member Nelson, can I ask you to clarify? Is your motion to approve based upon the findings set forth in staff's report and presented to council that support approval?
Yes. Sorry.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Muscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
We have no first readings and on to old business, uh, item 11A Development Review Process. On December 10th, 2024, Mayor Connors requested additional information on the timelines for the development review, including site, civil engineering, stormwater, traffic landscaping, utilities, review, et cetera. Council voted for advisability. Staff will now provide you the information on the development review process and that will be Mr. Parrish.
So it's your last meeting. I gave you a description of the, of the site development review process, but um, you had asked some questions about specific timeframes of certain types of reviews. So we have some data of, we did a random sample of some of the site plans that we have in process and how long it has taken our city engineer and also our landscape review to be completed for some of these projects. And I can give you some idea of where, how long they have been taking. So for example, landscaping, the landscape review, and if you know, a site plan, if you recall, includes a variety of sheets in it, some of it landscaping, some engineering, some utilities and whatnot. But as far as specifically landscape, which includes tree preservation, tree mitigation, and actual new plantings that be proposed, uh, some of the, we took five projects. Washington Square Activity is a particular development that's going through a process right now. For a landscape review, it took about 38 days. For a Chase Bank, it took about 38 days. Christian Court Condos, which is in current review, also 24 days. Homes Two Suites, uh, Home Two Suites, excuse me, about 50 days. S&amp;J Oaks Final Platte, about 58 days. That's the landscape review. On the engineering, uh, same projects. Uh, Washington Square Activity took about 29 days. Chase Bank, about 24. Christian Court Condos, about 13. And Home Two Suites, about 37. And S&amp;J Oaks Final Platte, about 43. Each, I can't explain as to why each one is different and it all depends on the complexity of the project and the docket that the reviewer has on their list as far as when they can get to that particular project. Our code does say that, uh, certain projects such as, that are related to downtown and that are affordable housing related, go to the top of someone's list. That is city policy. We always try to do that. If we do find projects that could be at a third review and only have maybe a couple of comments, we'll get those at the top of the list so we can get them out quickly. Uh, a first review just goes through, gets listed as they come in. Some times of the year, um, we get, um, a lot of applications, a lot of submittals at one time. I can say right before Christmas is a, is a classic time when we get everybody's requests or submittal for a site plan and all of a sudden we have a long list to go through going into the new year. Um, so some times of the year, it's, it's a little less and other times of the year, it's a lot more. So that's just a random sample. Um, if you have any questions about that, I'll try and answer.
Counsel, counsel, Member Stokel?
Yep. Um, we have just one engineer on staff.
We have one city engineer, Cobena, who hand, who reviews, uh, stormwater and drainage reports. And then he does look at, uh, some other things as well related to the site plan, but we do have other staff that help him pending on that, on those other types of reviews. But specifically, when it comes to drainage reports, he, he's the sole person.
Now, you do have other engineers that aren't part of community development, like Ashley Smith does other, um, site reviews for water and sewer.
That's correct. Yeah, I'm only looking at the city engineer for in our department.
And that was going to be my follow-up question, yes. So the other engineers that we do have, is that a separate timetable?
Yes.
Okay. So then we would have the water, um, portion as well. And then for the landscape review, how many staff people could do, are qualified to do that portion?
We have one dedicated staff member. We have a site inspector and we also have another staff member that's spending half their time primarily on this. So landscape reviews include, um, the landscape plans and tree preservation plans for subdivisions, which are very complicated. Site plans for commercial development like a hotel or a, um, a retail center. And then you also have, uh, class one permits, which are smaller type additions or small improvements to existing sites typically. Uh, but they might have some landscape review with that as well.
Okay. Um, and then I guess my last question would be, so I'm seeing, I would say, average maybe a month for landscape, a month for engineering. So that's two months there plus the other components to this process. Is there any, just from, I guess, what you've seen with other municipalities, is there any way that those timeframes could get down to a week potentially? And what would that look like?
I don't think they can go down to a week.
Okay.
The code says we are, recommends that we go, uh, try to complete these reviews, each review within 30 days. And a lot of times we can do that, but some of the more complicated ones, and especially we get everything at one time, that, that number goes up.
Okay.
Now, a few, about six months ago, um, you know, for the past couple of years, we monitored and then the numbers of timeframes has been increasing until, I think about September, October, uh, we noticed it went up to 50 days on some of these projects. And that's when we came to City Council and asked for assistance. And that's when we received your approval to go forward with hiring a new employee, which has helped tremendously.
Okay.
We're seeing a difference now. So those numbers have gone down to about maybe 45 and down to 41. So we're getting better at it. Um, I did include in your agenda, um, some strategies or recommendations that we would suggest.
Okay.
Because that was some of the question, that was the question you had for us. I remember at the last meeting you were asking, it looked like you were looking for a quick win. And unfortunately, I can't provide that, but I can give you some suggestions that will help us in the long term.
Okay.
Um, so on page 580 of your packet, you'll see that. Uh, some things we've, I, I pointed out some things we're doing right now and that are upcoming, which I've mentioned before, some software improvements and AI tools. But some other addition, uh, changes that we would recommend include, um, really evaluating our landscaping code to see if there's some things that we can make some changes to that are easier, um, such as not requiring waivers or administrative approvals, or I'm sorry, uh, administrative waivers and approvals by our development review committee potentially. Maybe those can be expedited without having to go through any kind of special process if there's a deviation requested. Uh, another is, um, we do have several ordinances that are being considered and will be brought back to you, that the previous council authorized us to go forward and draft that are landscape related. Those, if they're adopted, will extend the time a little bit, so we need to consider how much of a regulation you want to add into the, into the code. Uh, stormwater and low-impact development. We are gonna suggest, uh, later this year, uh, a request to hire an additional employee to help these, the engineer in our department, uh, more or less of an engineering assistant.
So would be an engineer, though?
Not a full engineer, an engineer assistant.
So what we're looking at is somebody that has an engineering degree that may not have the time or pass some of the tests that they're required to.
Okay.
That'll open up more flexibility.
Yeah, so they'll use whoever, they have to work under an engineer and use that stamp until they get their qualifications.
Okay.
Another suggestion is the, uh, with the low-impact development ordinance, we've become very good at it now. Um, and we believe that we can, we would like to make some changes to that ordinance so that it's easier or won't require a developer and applicant to have to go through the development review committee or go through the administrative waiver process, kind of eliminating some of the processes so that they can go forward with some of the techniques that are identified in that ordinance without having to get a special approval. And then lastly, um, we attempted this with the previous council, uh, making some more flexibility with the parking requirements. Uh, Titusville has some of the more stringent parking requirements in the county. And, uh, we routinely process requests to reduce parking numbers that require, the minimum number of parking spaces for development. And in some cases, makes sense to require, what we have in there makes sense as far as a minimum, but for, uh, multifamily development, um, we require two and a half spaces per unit, which is really excessive. Um, and for some other uses, um, we get the same kind of request. And even the dimensions of those, if we were able to have a little more flexibility of that, that won't require, cause someone to have to go before the development review committee to get a special approval. So those are some of the recommendations that we wanted to make to you.
No. And I, I appreciate that just from being, you know, I, I remember when we did the LID, the tree ordinance, and I appreciate you guys taking the effort to say, okay, what's working? What are some consistent themes that we are seeing that maybe we can? What are some consistent themes that we are seeing that maybe we can make it a little bit more efficient? And I think that's, that's what, I don't, I'm not sure what the mayor was bringing this up for, but I think just from what I've heard with applications and development and just kind of wondering where we are in the process, it's taking a long time. How can we, you know, go move from the 50 days to now you're saying we're get down to 41 to get to at least that 30 mark? What are some things that we could maybe assist with? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Verstokel. Vice Mayor Cole.
I know you mentioned that there's a pilot project for AI. Did the contract give you any indication, or do you have any feel for how much time? It should save quite a bit, but I know you're saying site plans at first and building permits, but it can probably be expanded, expanded more than that. But in talking to developers, they are more than interested in, they wouldn't mind paying additional monies if it will speed up the process. So just, when you get it, can I, I need a favor, I'd love to see it.
Well, last year, the council did approve a fee, an expedited fee
Right.
that we can, someone can utilize to, for us to be able to put their plan through the artificial intelligence program. Right now, we're just doing a pilot study just on single-family permits to see how this works.
Okay.
And then if this works, then we'll expand it to site plans.
Sounds good, but.
Some of the estimates I've heard so far, it can reduce it down to maybe a third or even two-thirds of the timeframe, because a lot of the time spent on some of these site plans is discounting.
Tedious stuff, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else from counsel?
Well, thank you, Brad. And the reason, you know, I think it's important to look at these things is because, you know, over the last 40 or 50 years, there's been councils putting in ordinances in place, and sometimes they get a little whopper jawed, you know? They'll put a rule in place and then 10 more rules to fix the first one, and it gets so complex that nobody can work their way through it. And that's what I'm afraid has happened, is, you know, like you mentioned, it's very difficult to migrate. And from some of the maybe reports I've heard, is that the AI is also unraveling some of the contradictions within our own code. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
That's one of the benefits we want to see out of the, using AI, is that it will identify or flag some of those areas in our code where there may be some conflicts, where we need to make some changes.
Like a four-person apartment quadplex on a commercial zone property. All right, does counsel want to take any action at this time? All right, see, and then, thank you very much, Brad, I appreciate it.
Onto new business, this is a.
We do have cards on that one.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
We do have cards.
We weren't taking any action. Hey, we'll do the cards.
Kay St. Ange.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. Titusville is growing leaps and bounds. Efforts are being undertaken to reduce time to review site plans. The hiring of a new planner has already reduced review time from 50 to 41 days. Staff recommends a mid-year hire and a new engineering assistant to further reduce review time. With the city's rapid growth, the need to hire additional staff is to be expected. Staff's document strategies to reduce site plan review time. Item 3 acknowledges that the 2021 tree canopy and mitigation requirements have increased review time. This tree protection ordinance is one of the reasons why Titusville retains the small town feel desired by council and new residents. Without shade trees, our town will become unbearably hot as the climate warms. Indeed, thousands die yearly in the U.S. from the heat. Trees provide economic value by increasing property value. Trees significantly reduce polluted stormwater in, to the runoff into the lagoon, as the lagoon contributes $7.6 billion to Florida's economy annually. Preserving trees is critical to Titusville's economy. Implementing ordinances that protect the environment takes time. Many of the live oaks threatened by development in Titusville are over 200 years old. Surely, we can take the time needed when considering their preservation or removal. Council is considering extending canopy requirements to multifamily complexes. Currently, these requirements only apply to residential subdivisions. Trees reduce temperatures and improve air quality, thus improving residents' health. As more and more residents are renters, don't we want renters to have the same health benefits from trees that homeowners have, even if this adds to review time? Management would be responsible to maintain the trees. The latest talking points quotes Mayor Connors, saying, quote, "This prestigious Tree City USA designation reflects our city's commitment to planting, caring for, and celebrating trees. To enhance Titusville's beauty and sustainability while contributing to better air quality, public health, and climate resilience." Thank you, Mayor Connors, I definitely agree. Let's live up to this vision of the mayor's by taking the time in site review to preserve as many trees as possible, thus protecting the natural beauty of our town and the lagoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate you speaking, because it gave me a chance to formulate what I was going to ask him before I moved on, so thank you so much. And we're not doing anything with the tree ordinance right now, but what, I don't want to pass the gavel, but I would ask that counsel would make a motion to ask for advisability on tweaking those ordinances in terms of the administrative review process for what he was talking about, instead of having to go to their committee that meets every two weeks, where, you know, when it's LID, they can administratively make those waivers. He was talking about the waivers, you guys remember that? It was kind of at the beginning. Brad, can you give, give a recap on that?
If you go to page 580 of your packet.
Well, he's just.
Number three, is what I think it was you referring to.
He's just giving us like an overview, and if we don't take any action, then nothing happens. So that's why I was asking if you guys would jump on board with an advisability for them to maybe make those subtle tweaks in the processes for the waivers.
Okay, yeah, that, I'm fine with that. I took from that, that I guess you guys are working on that, and then you would bring it to us if you had those ideas, or do you need that advisability?
What I got from, from you is a general consensus that we can come back to you with advisability that's more specific on each of these.
Yes.
And I'm looking at number three, that there's three recommendations. We can do that together or separately, or I could just take a request or advisability direction from you tonight and go forward with it.
Yeah, I guess that would be my request, would be everything that Brad mentioned, where he mentioned the waivers and some of the administrative stuff. That was my intent by what I said, is I was glad they were doing that to kind of make the process a little bit more efficient.
Just clarifying, you know, because I just want to make sure we just didn't, you know, have a presentation, you know?
Nothing.
We're working towards something, so.
Okay.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
So do we need a motion?
Do you need a motion? All right, we're good?
No, it sounds like staff understands where we'd like to go with it. City Attorney?
I also want to make sure everyone understands what you're expecting. So Brad is going to come back with ordinances for public hearings for your consideration, is that correct? On item three, is that what?
Well, various different.
Tar everything, I just.
I guess my, maybe I can clarify. My request would be that anything that has to, that we need to change that you would come back to us with, I don't want to be specific, but I feel like that's the department that's doing that work, and so if you find and identify something that you can bring for us and explain it, that, that's what I would like. I don't know. So I don't want to be specific, like I need it to be exactly on this one thing regarding the waivers, but if you find something as you're going through the process that could make things more efficient, that's what I want to see.
What I'll do is I'll bring these back, not as ordinances in a hearing, but as maybe drafts or a list of ideas. This is why we'd like to go forward and get your direction to go forward with an ordinance.
Thank you. Any other counsel? All right, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Brad.
New business is.
We still have two more cards.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes, Stan Johnson.
It is for what now?
Oh, we're talking about the presentation that Brad just did on development review process.
Yes, I would like to speak on that.
There's some horrible problems that are going on here, and Mr. Connors, thank you very much for bringing this up, because the waivers and so forth that, that have been done administratively against our, which, which I can say is counter from, from our process of going through P&amp;Z or from, or any other organization, is shortening the process maybe, but it's, it's got tremendous amount of errors that have been made. For example, on the project that I've sent you, people mailed to you Saturday, is that SNJ Oaks. And I made a list of 25 serious problems that, that our city attorney is not responding to, Brad Parish is not responding to, so it's going to court. And I'm asking for these guys to be subpoenaed because of this problem that you brought out. It's completely, I would like you to read, before you do, read that, that email that I sent you that's four pages long, that lists over 25 problems, and that's not, that's just a few of them, with SNJ Oaks that went through the DRC. Just complete nonsense. When I go to the DRC and talk to them, they won't talk. It's so bad. Now, I'm not going to say it's bad, it's complete incompetence what the city's doing. For example, a survey, it's, it's, it's three foot off on the right-of-way, and we approve this across the street, we approved a minor subdivision, the city of Titusville approved it to be 50-foot right-of-way, and yet, for over three years, the city continues to approve that survey and the plat, which is completely nonsense, which I told you just a few today, is that, is that they got overhead electric, not shown on the plat, not shown on the survey, they got street signs on, on the sur, not shown on the survey, not shown on the plat, US Post Office recognizing, this is complete nonsense. You've got, you complain, you made a complaint, she's made a complaint, is those houses do not have access, do not have legal access on Lockingbird Lane, yet, you know, the plans show the same thing, because now you're agreeing with what you said, that, that final plans that the city approves has no legal access to the last house, no turnaround, and if you go into the street right now and make it into the 20-foot, you'll go right into a fence. You can see that. This is the problem that you've got. Maybe, maybe the people who are reviewing it do not know what they're doing. I've been doing it for years. I see horrible problems with this, and I told them from the very get-go that I would never have let that engineer do the plans.
Thank you, sir.
And that's the way you did it in the county.
Ms. Shifalo, I believe you're up, am I correct, city clerk?
You are, and she's the last card.
I'm so sorry for omitting you all.
You're so psychic. Or I'm just so transparent. Shifalo, Tropic Street. I'm very disappointed in Brad, my boy Brad. Please, Mr. Parish, don't let the fact that if adopted, the new requirements for tree canopy and the critical root zone, which will keep these trees alive, if it's not adjusted to be correct, what's the point? And he says that it will further extend this site review process. As Ms. St. Ange pointed out, these trees have taken a long time to get to be where they are, and they do a lot for everyone, whether my friends, the concerned citizens realize it or not. Trees are a valuable asset, and if it takes a few days, maybe more, to go with the new ordinances, then so be it. Fund a new full-time employee, what a great idea. They did it once already, and it's working, it's reducing time. Just think what another employee, and it shouldn't be too hard to find qualified new hires, because there's plenty of young new hires coming fresh out of college and universities with the latest techniques and solutions, and there's all these experienced elders being released from the federal gov that are going to be looking for jobs. I think you'll find some very qualified planners who can help the process, and not at the expense of our environment. We have very precious little native land left, and to not take the time to really go ahead and do true low-impact development, and to preserve trees that are standing and that have been growing for who knows how long. Remember, I learned 15 years for these sable palms that I always thought were just palmetos and things until they started growing. They're 15, five to 10 to 15 years underground before they start showing their trunk above ground. That's longer than some of us keep some of our pets, you know? I mean, trees have much value, as Ms. St. Ange has pointed out, and as the previous city council finally learned and was able then to pass an ordinance, we're just asking for us to maintain the things that we have. Nobody's going to live long enough to see a 300-year tree again, are we? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. City manager?
Onto new business, this is a code enforcement lien reduction request for 4320 Abbott Avenue. Staff is recommending that you approve the special magistrate's recommendation for code enforcement lien reduction on the daily fines from the amount of $9,925 to $325, and payable to the city of Titusville within 90 days, and the property is located on 4320 Abbott Avenue. Mr. Tolleson's here to brief you up on this.
Yes, sir. This case did go in front of the special magistrate. Mr. Akers is here this evening. He has done considerable amount of work, as if you saw the pictures in the case. He originally paid off $32,422 of the lien, and he included in that was the city's hard cost. At the hearing, either we communicated it wrong, but Mr. Akers reduced the city's hard costs one more time. He didn't have to. So at the hearing, he asked for it to, he wanted all of it to be removed on the second time, for a total of the $9,925. Special magistrate said, because he didn't request it, he could only match what he had asked for, and again, a lot of great work was done to that home. I'd like Mr. Akers to comment on it.
It's pretty late for me.
Don't feel like you're the Lone Ranger.
Yeah, but I heard you guys stay here sometimes until 2:00 in the morning.
We have fun here.
No, what I did was, the original, the original fine amount was $10,000, whatever, 9925 and 325 is, that's what it was. When I wrote up the, the request to get a refund, I put the 9925 in there, and I think what I did was take out what I thought was going to be your costs, the 325, or whatever the administrative costs were, and then I found out that those have been paid. So what I'm here tonight for is to try to get the 9925 and the 325 back, because the magistrate could only give me what I put on the form. And actually, it was, I screwed it up, because I spent a lot of money on the house. The house is like brand-new now, and I'm probably going to lose more than you're finding me selling it.
Member Nelson?
So Glenn, I understand that the magistrate suggested reducing the fine, but didn't give him back the 325 that he'd already paid, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am. He had already actually paid that, and so he, he had actually reduced it again. So he didn't, he didn't owe that. He owed the $10,250, which was the actual fine amount.
And she's recommending that we reduce that to 325?
Yes, ma'am, because that was as far as he would go based on Mr. Akers' request.
He told me that if I'd have made it out for the $10,000, whatever it is.
That's correct.
He said, I would have reduced the whole thing if you'd had it on the sheet, but he said you fill the sheet out at 9925. the sheet out at 9925. So he said legally, that's all I can do. He said I had to come to the city council and get down on my knees and, you know.
I don't see you on your knees, though.
If I get down on my knees, I can't get back up.
I know. So Glenn, if we turned around and said, he doesn't owe anything, is that acceptable?
Yes, ma'am. The magistrate was to go ahead and remove the $9,925, and Mr. Akers is asking for the additional 325.
Okay.
So it'd be a zero balance, and we can clear his property.
Well, I think I'd rather do that than not ask him to get on his knees. We'd get out of here faster, so.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yes, I think Member Nelson got to the point I was making, is yes, what is the full amount just to approve the?
It would be 9,000, it would be $10,250.
10, okay. Okay.
Member Muskoso?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion. So I move to approve the special magistrate.
We have one card. Um, Stan Johnston.
I have to move? Okay.
You don't have to go all the way, very far, okay?
I don't have to go very far?
That's right. I might be older than you.
Not much.
78.
Yeah, four years.
Okay, well anyhow, I had just had an operation on my left knee, and I had gel shots four weeks, four week gel shots.
City Clerk?
My right knee.
Time, thank you.
Okay, my right knee. So I don't want to get down on my knees either, okay? I'm not, okay, I'm too old for this, too. So I'm, and I'll tell you what, something else is that what I see in some of these cases that goes before jail, Mr. Tolson, is that I see that the city has the power to do cruel and unusual punishments. Cruel and unusual punishments are prohibited by our constitution, but sometimes the prices of these penalties are ridiculous, so I'm in favor of any reduction that you can do for this old man, okay?
Yeah, I'm on fixed income, you know.
And you got bad knees?
Yeah, I got bad knees.
Okay, me, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Member Muskoso?
Yes, I move to approve the special magistrate's recommendation to reduce the code enforcement lien for the property located at 4320 Abbott Avenue from the daily fine amount of $9,925 to zero. Is that correct? With the reduced fine payable to the city of Titusville within 90 days, which is zero.
There is no pay.
No, okay, so, so just to zero.
But it should be $10,000.
Yes, ma'am, it'd be reduce the $10,250 to zero.
Okay, so I meant that the $10,250 to zero. Thank you.
Second.
And one other thing, you know, if you guys streamline, if you streamline the process for rehabbing these problem houses, you might get more of them done here in Titusville. But this house, I've been at this house now for a year, but part of that was because your magistrate quit in October. So we got pushed back from October until last month to go before the special magistrate. But it takes so long, and the only reason that I accrued this fine was because it took five weeks to get, to get my building permit. And that's between the time I bought the house and I got the building permit is when I accrued this whole fine. Because by the time I got the permit, we had everything done that we could do, but without a permit. So it's just something for you to think about in the future, because you got a ton of houses in this town that could stand to be rehabbed, but it's just not feasible, not the way, not the way it's set up right now, so.
As you heard in our last conversation, we're discussing what ways we can expedite those processes. So thank you very much. I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Item 12B, which is a code enforcement lien reduction request for 4100 Trinidad Avenue. Approve the special magistrate's recommendation for a code enforcement lien reduction be denied in the amount of $11,325. The magistrate has based its findings with the requirement of City Code 3171G. The property is located at 4100 Trinidad Avenue, and Glenn's here to answer any questions that you may have.
City Clerk, are there any cards on this?
One card, it's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, thank you for having Glenn Tolson as employee. I think he's doing a good job, and I'm in, I'm in favor of this, not having cruel and unusual punishment, because that's what I see sometimes it is. I've seen somebody lose everything because of what I consider cruel and unusual punishment. Right now, I'm facing two years in jail for something that didn't happen.
Thank you.
Actually, not even no medications.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Glenn?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to give us the summary?
Yes, sir.
Trying to speed us along.
This particular residence, however, did take some time. We had two additional hearings, we had some issues with the previous owner. It went through, I think it was two or three LLCs before we could catch an owner. We finally got one, and they were out of Miami. They did not show up for their hearing, because the special magistrate had particular questions about that they didn't know what the fines were when they purchased it on the final time. They did not appear for that, and they've not had any contact with us at all, other than their application. And magistrate had recommended in this particular case to deny it, because he had several questions he wished to ask them in reference to the case, and they're not here this evening.
Thank you, Glenn. Any discussion from council? Can I get a motion, please? Member Nelson?
Move to approve the special magistrate's recommendation for code enforcement lien reduction to be denied for 4100 Trinidad Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Glenn. City Manager?
Item C, which is Public Works Admin Engineering Transition to 2000 South Washington Avenue. Approve the plan to occupy 2000 South Washington Avenue and utilize the building for the Public Works Department Services. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment in the amount of $45,000 to provide funds for the Welcome Center improvements in the amount of $5,000, and the network improvements and interior technologies needed to facilitate this effort at $30,000, or 30, $40,000. And Kevin's here to answer any questions that you may have on this occupying the former Chamber of Commerce building and building a addition inside the Welcome Center. Kevin?
City Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
We have one, it's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm a professional engineer, and so is Mr. Cook. He does a really good job. We're lucky to have him. We need to keep him. Make him happy, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I mean, I believe we could call it a night after that, because how is it going to get any better?
I think you embarrassed it.
Member Nelson?
Would you like a motion?
I would.
Move to approve the plan to occupy 2000 South Washington Avenue and utilize the building for the Public Works Department Services.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion?
Wait a minute, we got a term.
Did you do the budget amendment?
Well, we have to approve the associated budget amendment in the amount of $45,000 to provide funds for the Welcome Center improvement, network improvements, and interior technology needs to facilitate this effort. Now, second.
So that was a friendly amendment on the second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thanks for that presentation. That was really good.
Petitions and requests, non-agenda items.
I just wanted to ask, because I didn't see it on the agenda, are we going to get any information for the citizens on the process of the city manager recruitment and also how the citizens are going to be involved? I know we all gave you a lot of suggestions previously, and I didn't see anything about it, so I think an update would be nice.
Thank you for that question. Where we are at in the process is in the RFP process for a search firm. So I believe at the next meeting, we'll have those presented to us as to which search firm we will ultimately hire, so that will be a topic at the next meeting, just in the search firm. And then, of course, when we go through the search firm, we're going to be looking at what their process is, and especially citizen engagement, I'm sure, being a part of that process.
Okay.
So I believe we're all kind of going through this for the first time up here, but we're just trying to do our due diligence and making sure that we're looking at all available options.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to keep us aware of that, because we have a very definitely vested interest in this. Thank you.
Okay, Stan, it's all you with. Harry spoke.
All right, and any other non-agenda items? All right, moving on. Thank you very much.
Mayor and council's reports?
Yes. Thank you very much. I'll just kick it off. A lot of cool things going on, our city's moving in a very positive direction, I feel like for the most part. Couple things I wanted to bring up on my report. Like I said earlier, a lot of the things on my report end up there because of concerns that citizens bring to me when I'm out and about in the community, and I just ask that council discuss them and see where we might go from there. But one of the things that I personally put on the report was the discussion on Resolution 23, 2013, the Titusville Community Service Award. The discussion I would like to have on that is because it is mandated in the resolution as to where and when that event takes place every year. Yeah, it's, it has to be at the Flag Day Ceremony, and there's nothing wrong with the Flag Day Ceremony. I think it's a great ceremony. I just feel like if we're giving a award to the, you know, person with the most community service, it should probably have a little bit more gravitas to that. Part of the, some of the discussion I have with staff was, you know, instead of like creating an award ceremony, we already do a thank you dinner to our volunteers, and it might be nice if instead of presenting this in June at the Flag Day, we present this at our thank you dinner for all of our volunteers in October, which would also give our Titusville Community Service Award Selection Committee more time to solicit applications and get the word out, so people can apply for that. So that is something I want to bring up for discussion. Member Nelson?
So the question is, how did we end up doing it on Flag Day? I'm sure there's some kind of history that, you know.
I was not around in 2013 to tell you.
None of us were. But I think before we discuss changing something, we need to find out why it's like this. So maybe our city manager can sort of find out?
Well, what I would recommend, if you want further discussion, that you do an advisability to bring back the item for your discussion and vote.
So that would be my motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion from council? Any further discussion from the crowd? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And that's kind of the idea, is just to have that conversation, because if you've never been to that event, it's a great event about the Flag Day Ceremony, but then afterwards, it's like, oh, by the way, the city's giving out an award, so I just wanted us to have that brought up. Also, I wanted to update y'all. This week, I had a meeting with some of the downtown merchants to discuss what they would like to see in terms of community events. I think there's a buzz in the air. I think people, you know, over the last year, I've been campaigning and talking to everybody. People want community events, but what does that look like? Do I think that should be funded by the city? No, not really. But I think that's where my role or our role is to help kind of curtail and help guide, and it was amazing, because even after just word got out that I had a meeting with a couple people to talk about what we can do downtown, they all started meeting on their own already. So they're excited, and they're getting the ball rolling on their own. It was just the idea that, you know, we're here to kind of, you know, egg them along and cheer them along and help support what we can support. So at the end of the day, we have a second meeting scheduled on March 10th, and if, you know, word's getting out there that, you know, people want to come to this, then I can't hold it in a conference room, so I don't know how many folks are going to come, but we're basically just going to talk about what they would like to see, what that could look like, and the goal then is to then take it to the general public and look for volunteers. And what this could be is a start of maybe a community events committee. I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying there is, you know, some long-term kind of work we got to do, but we're just in kind of the first step right now. But I think there's a lot of awesome energy in the air for people wanting to come together and do things. So I was just wanting y'all to know what I was doing and have any discussion or feedback from you guys. So Member Muskoso?
Yeah, to piggyback on that, I was at the star party. I know that you were there as well, and it was a great event put on by code enforcement and right next to it in that property. So Glenn and I actually have lived in the same area before, and so we attended a lot of the same community events, so I love the ideas that he's bringing over here and wanting to have those community events. I know we've talked about block parties being downtown and where we'd have to shut off US1 and how difficult and expensive that process is, but where they had the star party, there was a lot right next to it. I mean, the city owns that, where we could eventually do, you know, have music out there and have food trucks, and I think that's Glenn's idea, is to build upon that, and those are not expensive events, and so, and that will also draw people downtown as well. And so I think, yes, we want to, you know, do block parties downtown, but I think we have to, we might have to move a block over to get these things, and so these could just, this star party could be kind of a start to those community events, and Glenn was really excited about it, and so I think just seeing the star party and seeing the potential that was there was really exciting, and seeing the families that were there and just the availability of the property. And, you know, my daughter and I, we walked all through downtown doing the scavenger hunt, and so I'm super excited about that, and I'm sure that the downtown businesses would kind of get on board with something like that as well.
Thank you, Member Muskoso. Member Nelson?
I was just going to say, the chamber is also working on that, so I wasn't able to go Saturday. I'd much rather have been there, but it sounded like a great event, but I don't want to see too many people trying to push the same idea and work on the same idea. So as I said, I know Erin's already working on it. She invited me to a meeting. One of the ideas was to do a murder mystery downtown, so there are things out there being worked on.
There absolutely are, and that's kind of what I'm trying to do, is get everybody on the same page, you know, and bring everybody together, because we're never going to accomplish anything alone. So, and I'm, of course, in constant contact with the chamber and what's going on there, so I appreciate that. Sorry, we were talking about downtown events. I'm sure you got the same emails that I did, but do you guys want to have any discussion on allowing tree removal and easements without a permit? Seeing none, again, if people tell me there's a problem, and I say I'll bring it up, I'll bring it up. So if you, I don't quite frankly understand the issue, but, you know, if the tree shouldn't have been there in the first place, like, I get it, but it is kind of frustrating to have to pay the city to take down a tree that shouldn't have been there, so just keep that in the back of your hats. Also, there's been some issues brought up to me about fence permitting rules, and of course Glenn just left, didn't he? Apparently, it's very hard to enforce requiring a permit on replacing fences, because our ordinance is, say, 50%, and if you have three sides of a house, how do you tell how much is needed, you know, before you need a permit? So I believe it's causing some issues, and I guess when code enforcement came out, they said we can't even enforce this policy, and isn't the number one rule to not have a policy you can't? And isn't the number one rule to not have a policy you can't enforce? So I don't know if you guys have heard about any of these issues, but wanted to put it in front of you guys and see if you guys wanted to ask staff to weigh in on how we could maybe look at that policy and write it differently. Seeing none, moving on. All right. One of the things that came up during my community outreaches was this happen to Citizens Academy, where they could get kind of a crash course on how city government works and how it operates. And then I believe that was a question, and it was sent out to email to all of us. But I think that is something that would probably be valuable to our citizens. But again, it's up to council on whether you guys think we should do something like that, so that people know how our government works, because I'm sure that you guys get the same questions I do of, where do I go for X, Y, Z? Right? So. Member Nelson?
I will say, we did have it.
Mm-hmm.
And the state attorney's office was part of that. In fact, our last state attorney fellow attorney was the person who got tagged with doing the training. And that pretty much fell apart. So I'm not sure if revising it is appropriate. It seemed like, I'm going to say, the numbers decreased, decreased, decreased. And then it was like it got hijacked by three people. So it sounds great. I love the idea. But it wasn't working. So I would just put that out there.
Yeah, and I understand those concerns. I think, you know, Rachel Sadoff does a very successful one. And I don't know what she does differently about it that makes it so successful, but I hear rave reviews about that process. So might be something for us to consider going down the road, especially as we look at our strategic planning initiatives and things like that in terms of community engagement. So, all right, that's it for that. And then there's a request on here for approval for a presentation. That should not have been on there. It was on the initial agenda and then got removed and then got placed on mine, and that is not my request. Next up is the request council approval for me to advocate on behalf of the folks in the Joinerville area. Ms. Shifalo can speak to this. At the Concerned Citizens Group, I was asked, why does it not say MLK Drive in this section that we have been designated MLK Drive? And to the city's response is, it's not our route. It's 405, right? So that means we got to get the state to do it. So the question is, would you guys permit me to, you know, represent the community to see if I can lobby the state to put up a couple signs? I mean, it seems like a small thing to do. I mean, at the very least, I think we can write a nicely worded letter, you know, to ask those questions. But I know we have our lobbying days coming up. Maybe something we can put a bug in the air about as well. Member Nelson?
I appreciate that you want to advocate for what the state agents, but I think we'd be better off if it was done. We're supposed to be a group. This should be a group effort, as opposed to an individual effort. So just like we did with Fish and Wildlife for the Manatees, we authorized Dan to write a letter on our behalf. But it needs to come across that this is on our behalf, all of ours. And I think that would probably be appropriate. I don't know that they would listen to us, because FDOT doesn't seem to listen to us. But that, I think that could be appropriate.
Absolutely. And I think at the very least, we could write a letter on behalf of our citizens to advocate for them. You know, and that's why I put it on my report, was to ask for authorization and direction. You know, so it was kind of generic, because I did not know in which way council wanted to go. Member Moscoso.
Yeah, I did talk to our city manager about this, and he did tell me we do have some signage there as well. And so I think that would be something we also need to consider. What do we have out there? And where would we want new signage? And where would it be appropriate? And so those things. And I haven't driven down there to specifically look at that, but I'll do that and then, I think, move forward from there.
You know, I was at the dedication of that, I don't know how many years ago it was. There's signage there, so where is there not signage that needs to be? When we dedicated it, the sign was there. Now, I don't know if they moved it or what.
It's still there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I remember when, because I was there as well.
Yeah.
And so I guess I'm unclear about, I guess, the request, because I know that we have designated it. I don't know if it's to add it to the green signs on like, or where exactly. But my other thing to keep in mind is, I appreciate these requests coming forward, but I say this every meeting, I really want us to make sure we get on the same page of our priorities. Because what I don't want to have happen is, and this happens consistently, especially if you're in the fundraising world, you have somebody go and request and make a $10 request, and then somebody goes over, oh, why did you do that? I was going to make a $100 request, and now they say, oh, we already gave. So we need to be very aware of what we're asking of the state, if this is a top priority for us, or is it the widening of 405, and we really need to put all of our effort and time into that. So I appreciate the ideas and different things coming forward, but I'm just nervous that we are getting kind of sidetracked. We've got a lot going on. We've got to hire a new city manager. We've got a lot of different big items coming before us. And I just want us to stay focused on making sure that we make good decisions that will then trickle down into other decisions that will hopefully benefit our city and not just get all of our time and then all of staff's time tied up into these one-off projects. That would be my request.
Thank you, member Stokel. I believe when the request for information came through, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the response from staff was, you know, it's a state road. We can't put up any signs. Right? And so my understanding was, I mean, of course, I haven't seen any signs, so I'm assuming there is none there. You know, maybe I need to go find the sign. Do you know where the sign is? Toni doesn't know where the sign is, and she drives those roads every day. Right?
There is a sign.
There's a.
It's like a car coming across over the railroad tracks on South Street on the right, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, north side of the road.
Member Nelson?
Two blocks. I think Sarah's right. This is just, hey, we want more signs, but we need to focus on things we really need. And I'm looking at cuts, federal cuts, which apparently is going to impact Meals on Wheels, Section 8, housing, and a bunch of other things. And so, yeah, it'd be nice to have a second sign on 405, but I'd rather make sure our seniors have a roof over their head.
Any other discussion? All right. That concludes my report. Who wants to go next? Member Nelson?
Well, I'll go next. So I read the charter last week, and I think we need to go over some of the things that are in the charter. One of the things that the charter points out is that we have a counselor-manager form of government. And it very specifically says, we are not allowed to direct staff to do anything. So I can't say to Brad, I'll pick on him, because he's there. I can't say, Brad, I want, I want parking over at the Carter House. Or at Blount Park, which I do, but I can't direct Brad to do that. I can't direct Scott to expend funds unless it is authorized by us. So I think that really drove home the point that we need to be very careful about what we do and how we interact with staff. So very specifically says, we set policy. That's it. We set policy. We give it to Scott. Scott's job is to make that policy work. The other thing that, as I was reading through it, and you guys don't realize this, but anytime we tie up staff for more than two hours, we have to have permission of all of us. So I wanted to talk to St. John's Water Management about Wetlands, Wetland Medication Bank. And in order to do that, I had to have everybody's permission. So as I was going through the charter, which, by the way, it has some old language in it from maybe the 60s, but it was pretty clear about this is how we operate. So other than the old language, I was pretty satisfied with it.
Thank you for your report. Could you make a motion for me to extend for a few minutes?
Oh, move to extend it for 15 minutes.
Second.
Fast.
Any discussion?
Second.
Second.
I said, any discussion?
Oh.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. I wasn't trying to cut you off. I was just trying to get that in before the buzzer. So, thank you. Member Moscoso, would you like to go?
So last week, I met with Tag Garard. He's on our Planning and Zoning Commission. And as you know, he has an extensive background. He was a planner for St. Cloud, Assistant County Manager for Martin County. But he met with me about the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization. And I'm not on the board. I think we're alternates, and I think you two are on the board. But he felt it would be important for the Space Coast TPO to come and perhaps give us a presentation? No, I don't know.
The only reason I say that is because it's one of the most boring meetings that I've go to, because the majority of the things that they discuss affect the south part of the county. And they're talking about projects that would be done in 2045. I'm not sure, and America can piggyback with me, I'm not sure what benefit we would gain from having that. But I'll let.
Let me just finish with what he suggested. He thinks that there's money on the table. Now, I have never been to a meeting, so I, it probably is boring. But he wants, he thinks it's important that we know, you guys might know this, but how TPO prioritizes funds and transportation projects, Titusville's current and future transportation projects, and the TPO's plans and opportunities for city council and residents to provide input, relationship between TPO, FDOT, and local government. And this was kind of sparked by, I think he saw your mayor's minute about 405. And so he wasn't sure, and by speaking with me, he was right. I don't know much about Space Coast TPO. And so it was a suggestion, if that's something you guys want to move forward, or I'm happy to do my own research. I thought I would just kind of present that, just in case anybody else is interested. It could just be me.
Unlike the vice mayor, I do enjoy these meetings.
Okay.
Because we're talking about roads and infrastructure that are critical to the success of our city, and that's why I specifically wanted to be on the TPO. What I will say is, they do have some funds available, but a lot of the things that they talk about are funds that they can get for federal dollars, which have to be state or federal roads, right? So that's a lot of the bulk of the conversation. But I would say the 405 project has moved along a little bit further, because they saw that issue and they funded the study that FDOT wouldn't. So, you know, they do help push the envelope, and they do help advocate for us in our interlocal agreement and how that works. So I would definitely encourage anybody to kind of, you know, try to figure out how it works. But I will tell you, it's like anything else in government, it's overly complex. But it is something that is worth diving into.
Yeah, I was just going to move on to the next thing, unless you wanted to add.
Well, in saying that, do you think it would be worthwhile for us to have them? I'm not sure what they would, because there are no projects that they have. Only one is a 405 that really affects us. But if you think you would like to get a presentation.
Or perhaps you guys, since you attend those meetings, could bring back some information, especially like Mr. Garb was kind of telling me about, you know, those things. There was a lot of traffic calming, since they can't afford right now to widen it. They've done a lot of that traffic calming, and so making sure that our residents understand the why behind it as well, whether we agree or don't agree, just making sure that information is out there.
Absolutely.
And my, I have another one, and I'll try to be quick. I did a request to, as we're talking about, you know, funding is going to be changing. There's going to be a lot of cuts. You know, I looked at the grants, and we had a total of 15 grants from 2024 to 2025 totaling 1.6 million, which in my eyes, isn't that much. And so I was kind of curious, we don't have a grant writer on staff, and how we're getting these grants. And I learned that, you know, it's our staff, and they're taking their time to identify these grants, to write these grants. And I know, you know, Sue is great at getting these grants. I talked to Toni, the historic board. They're able to go after these grants, but I feel like there is money on the table, and I think we need to look at different ways to get that. And so I would like to propose the idea of discussing getting a grant writer. Now, that costs, it can be $16,000 to $80,000. Right now, we can hire a consultant to help us write these grants, but grants can be very complicated. You have to have specific language. Palm Bay has a grant writer. Yes, they're much bigger than us. Cocoa has a grant writer. Pensacola, Florida, which I didn't realize was around $50,000. It's about the same size as we are. I thought it was way bigger. They do have a grant writer as well. And so that's just something I just want us to think about, because what I, and I also want to make sure that we're thinking about ways that we can also cut our budget. Because what I don't want is, you know, August to come up, and then we're like, we haven't really discussed these things. And then, oh, we've got to raise the mileage rate, or, you know. So these are just things I want us to start thinking about, you know, and discussing. And I'd like to know your thoughts on the possibility of looking into a grant writer.
You know, I think it's a, I don't know how much money is out there, but it's actually, it wouldn't be bad to have a feasibility to determine if it's worth doing it. I mean, it's a really good idea, actually.
So I just want to remind council that during your budget process, you deferred 10 employees. Already?
But these grants may help supplant some of that stuff. You know, I don't know. And all I'm saying is that for us to look at the feasibility and to try to look at the pros and cons of having a grant writer. You know, we could come up with a spreadsheet and say, hey, this is how much the grant writer is going to cost us, $80,000 a year, and this is how much money that we can get from the grant writer if their grants are out there. Now, I don't have exposure into grants. I don't know how many grants are out there. I wouldn't even know how to start writing a grant. But I think it's something that we should look at. I don't disagree with that at all.
Yeah, I mean, with one grant, that can pay for the salary, to be honest. And that was one thing that when we went up to DC, we were advocating for, is right now, the grant process is kind of all over the place. And so we were asking our congress members to, it was so simple, but to get all the grants in one place, so that we could find them. And I don't see how our staff has the time, how is the, you know, planning department out there looking for grants? Or how is Kevin, how in the world does Kevin have time to be looking for infrastructure grants? They don't have it. And so for me, I just think we need to start thinking in different ways that we can, you know, possibly bring in more money for our city.
I don't know. I get a frog in my throat every time I talk tonight. Appreciate you bringing this to the forefront, member Moscoso. City manager, do we have any software in place that helps our special projects coordinator, who's designated?
We do. We have a process.
No, software? Like computer technology?
Sure.
Yeah, do we have a program that we pay for that lets us search for these grants?
We do.
Okay. Member Moscoso? I'm sorry, member Stokel. I saw you.
Yes. City manager, I thought Heather writes a lot of our grants. What is her official title?
Well, the A-
Well, the, the agency, I'll use Sandy as an example. She's one of our grant writers. Sandy says, look, I'm looking for this kind of a grant, for this kind of a project. Heather does the research using the software that we have, finds potential grants that we could apply for. Our process says, look, does it require a matching grant? What does it do? And then we make a determination whether it's worth putting the energy behind writing the grant for the return. And then Heather champions it along. You know, we created our own process with SharePoint, where the approval processes are all electronically now. And then launched the grant. And then Heather also checks the grant to make sure there's no deficiencies with the grant and follows it through, relieving the burden from the staff to see what the, where the grant is in the process.
Okay, so I feel like that's kind of, is a grant writer because she can't speak to the different areas. I mean, a grant writer on staff, I don't think can speak to all areas of the city anyway, at least at the college. Our grant writers, they work with the department that is requesting it, so.
That's very similar to what we do.
What Heather's doing. Okay, and then I believe, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, the Florida League of Cities has grant that I think that we're a part of, their process and their database as well. Okay, so is it my turn too for board? Okay, no, I know. Okay, now, so to Member Muscoso's point, I am, if something will pay for itself, I'm always in favor of that. I, I think it's good for us to be thinking about as we are going through the budget process. And then just finding out these questions, just knowing it going in, because that's where, I think Heather's doing that. But if she's not, or we need more, I think that's something we can do. I also appreciate you bringing up ways that we can cut our budget because that's something I'm always trying to do. And as the manager mentioned, last year, we deferred 10 employees. So like, start looking at that and thinking, what does that look like moving forward? If you're not paying attention or haven't seen lately to Department of Government Efficiency at the state level now, one of the things, and somebody was sending me information earlier today, looking into local government expenditures. So I think it's, right now, we need to be very prudent in looking at what we're doing, especially as we go through the budget process. Another thing, and Member Muscoso kind of touched on this, I think indirectly, my request was going to be for all of us that do sit on separate boards, if during our reports, we can give an update. So I try to do that, like with Space Coast League of Cities, Florida League of Cities. But for those that sit on the other boards, if something did happen, I feel like that would kind of help us know what's going on if we're not. My other request is, I feel like, and I can say this because I've been on council for a while, there's a lot more requests for information from staff. And my request would be, which is fine, my request is, if you've made one of those, if you can kind of talk about why you made that during this time, because I can't ask, I don't know who made the request to begin with. And then we can't talk about it other than this time. Specifically, the ones that I wanted to know about, and I don't know who, the contract, our contract employees and their pay, like what, why are we looking into that information? And do we need to have a discussion about that? The fence permits question, but I think it sounds like it was mayor did that one. And then the water conservation budget of around $100,000. I don't know if that was part of trying to see where we can cut costs. But anytime, like if there's something, if we're seeing them and we get that information, I don't know why those requests are coming through, or do we need to have discussion about that? So that would be my other request. Member Nelson also touched on something I wanted to bring up, is just reiterating our form of government, especially as we're now already starting the process for a new city manager. I was reading through the charter as well. And it just says, our form of government, it says, our jobs as council members, it's to enact local legislation, adopt budgets, determine policies, and appoint the city manager. Who then, the city manager is tasked with executing the laws, administering the government of the city. And what that means is, so once we set policy, that city manager has the authority to administer whatever we set, how he or she sees fit. Where we come into play is if we feel like the city manager is not doing a good job, we fire the city manager. Like, that is, that is our role. We have conversations with the city manager. We explain our vision to the city manager. But I feel like what's happening is there's either a lack of trust. I don't know what it is, but it's, I feel like we're starting to circumvent the process, and we're going directly to certain staff members. And I feel like we need to, again, go back to what our role is and what the city manager's role is. And if there are issues, unfortunately, I, I mean, I was taught, you praise in public and you criticize in private. And I wish that we could do this, but because of sunshine law, we can't. And I, I just feel like we need to address certain things, if there's things happening that you have concerns about, or what's happening at the staff level. Now is our chance to say, hey, city manager, I'm having some concerns with this. This isn't working, I need you to fix this. What can we do about it? Like, that, that is our role. I think sometimes we might have those conversations in private with the city manager, but we're one of five. And so it's hard for, I think, him to take direction if he doesn't know that's the majority of council and what we're feeling. And this is the most awkward way, I feel like, to conduct business. I don't do this if I'm running a business, you have conversations. This is not how the state does it. They go behind closed doors and they scream at each other. That's literally what happens. But because of sunshine law, this is how we have to do it. But I just feel like there's a lot of he said, she said. There's a lot of things I'm hearing personally that I don't know what the truth is. And so I, whatever it is, I just feel like we need to follow the process of our form of government. If we don't feel like the city manager is doing a good job, let's tell them. What's our frustration? Where do we need help or assistance from? What more information do we need? But whoever our city manager is, that person also then needs to be empowered to do their job and to run the city effectively as well. So again, I've been, this is going on my ninth year, and it's just, it's very tense. Every time I come to City Hall, it's, it's the most tense I've seen it. Everybody's on edge. It's just not a good culture or an environment. And I take that to heart, being a board member. Like, I don't want an organization running that way. It hurts our employees, it hurts our citizens. And I don't feel like I'm now being able to do a good job in my position here. So I don't know, whatever that is, what that looks like, if we're kind of bonded by being this family up here for at least two years, four years, whatever it is. And I, I just, we have to have these discussions in public, unfortunately. So I don't know if anybody has thoughts. That is just what I'm seeing, and it's, it's getting a little frustrating.
Can somebody make a motion to extend?
I'd move to extend to 11 o'clock.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Member Nelson?
But I also want to say that as council members, we need to be very cognizant of the staff and their time. Because when we're asking questions, when we're in the area, they're taking time out of whatever they're supposed to be doing to answer our questions or to pay attention to us. And that's something I noticed early on. I was in the planning department for something, and it sort of stops that workflow. So I think we need to be very careful about taking up their time because that means their work's not getting done. But if it's something we really need to know, we need to know it. But that's, I think, when we go through the city manager.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Anything else, Member Stokoe?
No, I would just appreciate some conversation or dialogue because otherwise I feel like our meetings are just going to continue like this. And I really want to get a good city manager.
Amen.
Vice Mayor Cole?
I pass.
All right. Have a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
Oh.
Sorry. So I just want to address your concern. I did do the records, or the request for all employees on contract. It started off with wanting to know about, because I always want to make sure I have correct information. So looking at Chief Lous' contract to make sure that when people are telling me these things, I know. And then what was the previous contract? And so that was why, how I was able to find out that, you know, had gotten extended. And then you, you hear in the community, this person's on contract, and, you know, they're not paying into the pension. And I just wanted to know the truth. And so that's kind of why I asked for those things. However, I will say, when I did that, you know, I'm looking, I'm looking at, and I'm not trying to come in here as Doge, so don't worry. But I'm looking at, we've got some positions that are set, they say temp, I mean, temporary. And this people have, these people have retired. This person has retired since 2012, and they're on a temporary contract. I mean, and, and so some of these, if you were able to look through the contracts, they make sense. You know, we're going to have, you know, a temporary on-call 911. That makes perfect sense. We have Peggy Busaka, she's on, she is on contract. And you can look at, you know, kind of the salary and see, okay, they used her when it was necessary. But when we have somebody on contract from 2012 as a temporary position, I feel like perhaps we haven't, we need to review some of those things. It doesn't mean that position isn't needed or necessary. But, you know, I think we also always, our employees that know they're going to retire should be training the next person to come up. And so that was kind of where that started. And then just to kind of review that list. So if you have a chance to kind of review it, I think it would be important, and I talked to the city manager about it, and he said I needed to perhaps sit down with Mr. De Niro. But that's kind of where it came from. And yeah, so those were, but I also, I'll just to speak to Member Stokoe. I understand what you're saying. It feels a little ambiguous. I know in the very beginning, just to be straightforward, I struggled because I had so many residents say, hey, I need this, I need this. And that's where the city manager, and I was like, I don't know what to do with this info. How do I, how do I help these people when I can't really talk to the staff? And I'm trying to learn the process. And that was one of the issues, I think, with Public Works. And I think it's getting better. But when people would say, I've called three, four times, and nothing's being done, and I'm elected to represent them, of course I'm going to ask, what can we do? And I have to say, I have seen a lot of improvement in the city. It's not perfect, but if you're driving down South Street, it looks better. Sisson is looking better. So it is a learning process for me, and I'm trying to get, to get better in that sense. But yeah, a lot of it is people asking me questions, and I want to help. It's out of a good heart, like, how can I help? And they've said, you know, I've tried to do it this way, I'm not getting a response. So that, that's what you're saying. I'd be happy to put that out there. And, but yeah, I think part of it is making sure of, Public Works isn't, if that's not working, then we're discussing it. What can we do to make it better? And we did have that discussion, and I'm seeing improvements. And people are seeing those improvements as well, so.
Member Stokoe?
Yeah, no, just to piggyback on that, and that's, I appreciate that. That's what I'm looking for, is for us to talk about that. And if you are having frustrations and you feel like you're not getting information that you need to do your job, like, let's talk about that. And let's make sure we are empowered to do what we need to do to represent citizens well. And then also making sure we give appropriate direction to the city manager to make sure that he, again, is administering our policy that we're setting. So that, that's all I'm looking for, is if we can kind of come together and say, hey, what are you doing? What is it that you're working on? How can I help you? And going down to the, talking about the downtown merchants, I can think back to when we used to have that when I first got on council. And I can think of some businesses that I'm like, oh, that's great. That's, I didn't know that you were working on that. I have some contacts that I can give you. Just knowing what each of us are doing and what we're trying to do to better the community, I just want us to all be on the same page and have, I think, Member Nelson brought it, that unified front as, our city council is working for you. This is what we're doing, and this is what areas we're covering as a unit, and not being divided at all. That, that is, that is my goal, and making sure that we're empowered, that we're empowering our city manager, whoever our city manager is, to do that and to do that appropriately. So, thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. City manager?
I've got one action item. Traditionally, city council has implemented a summer recess by canceling the second city council meeting in June. If you desire to continue this recess, it's staff's recommendation to cancel the presentations and regular meetings scheduled for June 24th. This provides council the summer recess from June 11th to July 7th. And I will need a vote for that.
I have one card, too, please.
Oh, thank you, city clerk. Who's the card?
Stan Johnson.
Remember, we're discussing the.
Yeah, I hear, I hear that. The thing is, is you're not taking care of. Sarah Stokoe was talking about you not getting answers. You know, right now is that, is that I have, for three years, I've had a list of errors that the city has made, legal errors, violations of law. And just on SNJ Oaks, I just sent you an email addressing at least 20 violations of law, serious violations of laws. They, they, what I have is closed doors. I don't think you should be going on recess. You should be solving these problems. This, right now, I'm going to court right now in the Supreme Court of the state of Florida. I'm asking my attorney to go ahead, and I wanted to subpoena these guys because they're not telling the truth, they're violating laws, serious laws. I just sent you, I just handed you a law today about these dams that the city's building. They're complete illegal. They're illegal by stormwater management, they're illegal by stormwater management's process. They're illegal in many ways. I don't think you should be taking a recess. You guys are in big trouble, the city's in big trouble. Who did I just send this email to? I sent it to governor, the governor, because you guys are not responding. These guys are not responding. I, I send you emails and so forth, I send you, everyone's got a, supposed to have a telephone call from me today to return my call about this issue. You don't respond. What do you expect me to do? By the way, I am a professional engineer. These are all coming from me, easily. These are, these are fundamental issues that you're violating laws against. I can't believe the city's doing this. I can't believe it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other cards, city clerk? Member Nelson?
Move to cancel the second meeting in June of this year for summer recess.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City attorney?
I don't have any action items. I just have the mandate from the Fifth District Court of Appeals in your package for your information, if you have any questions.
City clerk, are there any cards on this item?
There's no actions, so.
Okay, I was just double checking.
If you want to take a card, that's fine, I'll answer any question.
Well, I know Tony's going to say that she's not happy with the ruling, but can we?
I was going to say.
I know, but can we call tonight?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Shippensburg, Tropic Street. Two times we went to court, and it was passed by us, but you wouldn't give up. We were, we were ruled against by the appellate court, but not by the court of public opinion. We have raised so much attention to the issue of clean water, both drinking water, Member Cole, and stormwater, and sewage water, too. All ending up in the Indian River Lagoon, one way or the other. So I'd just like to point out that even though you beat us in the appellate court at your third effort, public opinion is on our side. Speak up, Titusville. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Stan Johnson here. I'm a professional engineer, and I'm an expert witness. And I have come to you many times about some issues that are very fundamental. Sewage is a very poisonous, toxic substance. None of that has gases that are odorless. The city of Titusville is not testing this properly. The city of Titusville goes out and looks at a site and says, well, it's, it's not, it's not a sewage spill. But it is a sewage spill. They have to test it. They won't test it. The, the city, we, we have our testers that are sampling it, are not testing it. They just look at it and then they go away. Testing, you cannot test sewage for, for odor. You cannot do that. Fresh sewage is defined in, in my book, in my textbook, as odorless. You're doing it wrong. Not only you're doing it, it's, for example, when I have sewage spills, I, I, for example, I called, I called, uh, Mr. Brewmon, come take a walk, walk out, me and, I'll show you the sewage spill. He didn't come out and show it to me. But however, a few months later, the city denied it by months, saying the sewage spill never happened. The sewage spill is not a, not only do you, do you have signed agreements with DEP of consent order 2, 2011, 21003, no, 20, I think it's 21. Anyhow, the consent order with FDEP, you still had positive tests of sewage going into the river from, from Space View Park and from the, from the manholes, still going in the river, and yet you guys denied it. I don't understand it. This is what, in other words, what I would like to do is, if I could, be put somebody in jail, because you, you guys are violating so many laws. And for example, just sewage, I can't even get people to turn off the fountains from sewage. So people get sewage, I had sewage all over my car. So what did I do? I go, I go to the, the sewage treatment plant or water treatment plant to show them the car. So what do they do? They called the police on me. So the police says I have to leave. So I still have a warrant, a trespass warrant from, from the city of Titusville, that I can't even go to a place where I used to work and where all the other people could go. That's what's going on. Okay. I don't, I don't think you're doing me right. I don't think you have any common sense, none of you, none of you. I don't see it in my way. My wife doesn't appreciate it either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other cards? All right, seeing as it's 10:59 now, 11 o'clock on the dot. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All right. Thank you.